Welcome to the regular meeting of the Glendale City Council for June 4th. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, council members, Brotman.
Here.
Carpetian.
Here.
Kasakian. Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Asatian.
Here. Pledge allegiance. Please stand with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invitation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we're standing on the indigenous lands of the Tongva people. We come together today with a shared commitment to serve our city, work for the common good, and strive for a brighter future for all. With this in mind, let us reflect on the words of Harvey Milk, who dedicated his life to justice and equality. Harvey Milk stated, "Hope is being able to see that there is light despite all the darkness." These words remind us that even in times of challenge and uncertainty, there is always a beacon of hope guiding us forward. It is our responsibility to nurture that light and remain steadfast in our dedication to making a positive impact toward equality and justice within our community. Thank you.
May we have your report, please?
Yes, the agenda for the June 4th, 2024 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on May 30th, 2024 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Now, what's next?
Next, our presentations and appointments. Item A, Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, June 11th, 2024 by Assistant City Manager John Tachdalian.
Good evening, Mayor Asatian, members of council. Next week, we'll start off with a joint meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority with one item. That'll be regarding acceptance of grant funds for the 2023 Continuum of Care Program. Then, we'll go into a special meeting of the Glendale City Council in the afternoon. And that'll be regarding Stage 1 preliminary design for a development of a new 40-unit, five-story multifamily development located at 126 to 128 South Kenwood Street. For the City Council meeting in the evening, under consent, the first will be one item from Finance regarding its cheapment of unclaimed checks and deposits. The next will be from Community Services and Parks regarding an Amendment 3 for the Supportive Services Program, followed by another subaward of grant for elderly nutritional program, nutritional meals program. 4D will be Community Development regarding a contract with JB Associates to conduct and analyze citywide pedestrian and bicycle counts. And under action items, we have three. The first will be from Information Technology related to resolution dispensing competitive bidding and authorizing a citywide low-voltage cabling service agreement extension. The second report will again be a resolution to dispens a competitive bidding and authorize standardized IT solutions and products from Palo Alto Networks, Cisco Systems, and Microsoft. And the last item will be from Public Works related to a levy of annual assessment and preparation of engineer's report for the North San Fernando Road Landscape Maintenance District.
All right, what's next?
Next, our consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. We do not have any cards or callers on this item.
I don't see anything from my colleagues, so I have a motion.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian. Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatian.
Yes. City Council and staff comments? Anyone?
Okay. Want me to start?
I don't have any.
Okay. Okay, I'll start. I have a number of things here, so let me start, though, with a request that we adjourned today in memory of Robert or Bob James McKay. You want me to read that at the end?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'll read that at the end, but I'll make the request that we adjourn in his name. Also want to congratulate Jay's Maintenance, which I think many of us know, Chris Waldheim, up on Foothill, who runs Jay's Maintenance, a very involved and generous member of the community. They had a 55th anniversary of their establishment, a little party up there, so just a shout out to him and the good work that he continues to do. Let's see, next is the presentation that was given by E3 and GWP at the Sparhite's Community Center last week. I attended the meeting, or Town Hall, I guess we would call it. I attended, there was a very good turnout. First, that's the first thing I noticed when I walked in, the room was absolutely full. I don't know how many people that holds, but it was good to see very strong community interest in what we're doing with our efforts to get more solar and battery storage installed in Glendale. I did feel the presentation was too technical. It certainly went over most people's heads, it went over my head, and I think about this stuff a lot. I thought it was a little too focused on making the case that meeting our 10% solar goal is impractical, at least by 2027. That may be true, but I thought that the meeting kind of focused on that. And on why net energy metering will have to change. Again, possibly true, but I thought there was an overly strong focus on that. And it left out, I think, the part that the public is probably most interested in hearing, which is, you know, what new incentive programs for batteries, let's say, that we're going to be bringing forward? What are some programs that we are thinking of to shift load or reduce energy demand? What programs might we have for solar storage for multifamily residents that don't necessarily control their own rooftops? I understand these things are coming. It was unfortunate they were not there for this public session, and I think there won't be another public session until this gets presented to council. So, just, I don't really know where we go with that, but at least for me, and maybe my colleagues feel the same way, this is complicated stuff. There's a lot that we haven't seen yet because it hasn't been presented yet, and I would certainly like to make sure we get one-on-one briefings, like deep dive briefings, not just the briefing that we do the day before our council meetings, but a deeper dive briefing prior to this coming to council, ideally with the involvement of the folks at E3 and GWP together. So, that would be a request, I guess, to the City Manager, because I understand it's not part of the contract with E3, so we might have to talk to them to see whether we can add that they do individual briefings. Okay. Next one is, a number of us got an alert today, not an alert, got some emails today saying that Glendale is not complying with the Solar Access Act, which is SB 379. And this is, this is legislation that requires cities to implement, you know, automated, online, instantaneous permitting for rooftop solar and batteries. And the emails were coming from an alert that went out from the Solar and Storage Alliance. So, I know that we did implement an automated system last year in time for, to meet the deadline that the state imposed. We did implement it, but what I would hope is that we could get a memo back, or maybe someone from GWP or from Community Development could come up here maybe next week and just tell us, you know, the number of applications that are going through this new automated system, the number that maybe are getting kicked out because they're not standard, or maybe they're being, people are applying through the standard process, how long the applications are taking, both using this new system and through kind of the traditional approach. Yeah, I want to understand, I haven't heard from the people at the Solar and Storage Alliance why they're saying we're not in compliance, because I thought we are. But I think it just would be useful for us to understand how the system is working. And I have heard other, you know, from time to time, we all hear complaints that it's taken too long to get some of these systems approved, and I don't know that that's always accurate, but it would be good if we could get a little briefing on that. Would that be, Mr. City Manager, could we have that come to us next week? Nothing formal, just in comments.
Councilmember Brotman.
In staff comments, perhaps.
I will get together with staff and see what we'll come up with. At minimum, we will provide a memo to council.
Okay, I think it would be helpful, and be helpful just to get the word out, because we are getting these emails. I think I got maybe four today.
And if you forward those emails to us, we'll definitely be able to respond to them after staff's done their research.
Okay, they're all form emails, so they're all the same. Finally, one other thing, there was an outage on the 28th, May 28th, when was that, over the weekend? No, when was that? Anyway, there was an outage that hit North Central. I know at 3:25, 13:25, I'm sorry, North Central, they got a text of the outage at 5:15, but it already started, and power was not restored to them till about 11:40. So, that was quite a long time. Also heard from somebody at 1,000 North Central, a business, who said that this is the fifth, maybe the sixth outage that's affected his property since October of 2023. I know we've heard before from GWP that there are issues in that, I guess with that substation or something like that. But I would like to know more about, you know, why, you know, what we're doing about this? When do we think we can get this fixed? The other thing that concerned me is I know that people told me they couldn't get through to GWP, and I think the police department probably got a bunch of phone calls, because when they called GWP, they just got voicemail. So, maybe also look at what we do when we have these outages. I assume this was not planned, or people would have been notified. I assume something blew up or overheated or something, but if you could give us more on that, so we know what took place, that would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. I also would like to ask council to adjourn the meeting in the memory of Raoul Porto Senior. And you want to hold off until the end for the bio? Okay. I have two other items. As some of you know, most of you know, you should know, that Glendale is a operator, along with Burbank and Pasadena, of the Burbank Airport. And it has been decided to put together a Citizens Advisory Committee on the subject of noise, in particular, how noise of planes taking off affect the neighboring communities and neighborhoods. So, we should put that on the agenda, I believe, and maybe decide how we're going to select three members of the Citizen Advisory Committee. It's going to be advisory to the airport authority. Each of the other cities have three appointees. I'm not sure how the other cities are doing it. I think Burbank had an application process and council voted altogether, but it's entirely up to the council as to how we want to do that, so.
Councilmember Najarian, thank you for that information. Yes, Frank Miller had apparently sent me a letter with that information and request that we have three residents appointed to the advisory board. We have some ideas, I'll share with council, and we'll find out what the other cities have done, we'll take it from there.
Okay. The last item I have is regarding the city's membership on the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments. It is a, as the name states, it is a collection of governments, including two county supervisors, four or five LA City Council members, and the cities of Santa Clarita, San Fernando, Burbank, and Glendale. And I've been on that COG since its inception, which I think is 2010, and my schedule is getting a little bit tight. I would like to put this on the agenda to see if anyone from council has any desire to take that position, as well as perhaps appointing an alternate, which I believe could be a staff member, so.
Councilmember Najarian, if I may add to that, I recognize that we also have other outside bodies. If you don't mind, I'd really like to have staff bring all of them together for us to look at, because I know we have vacancies on the others, and I think it'll be a good opportunity for us to just kind of review and make appointments, so we don't have vacancies from our city and these outside bodies.
And whichever way, whichever way, yeah. Do we need a second on that, or you're just going to do it administratively?
We'll do it, it's in the works, we just need to update it and make sure that the information we have is accurate.
Okay.
Great.
So, you can think about.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carpetian.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Starting with light stuff, I attended one of my favorite events in Glendale, Cars for Cops. This is a great event, it's getting bigger and bigger every year. We get together and enjoy our cars and share our stories and a bunch of car guys and drink coffee early in the morning, and also support our police department. It was a great event, I want to congratulate all the organizers. The water fountain in the City Hall, my understanding it is going to be turned on very soon, because I think that's one of our focus points of this facility, that I believe it should be in operation. I hope it comes, I hope we get it done soon, and it will be working, because it's really nice, the sound of that water fountain is very, very relaxing. I think some of us, most of us, we need that. I had a briefing on Rock Haven property, and I just want to mention that while we're working on the design and documents for upgrading that facility, we need to bring water and power and utilities to every building, so after the ADA is done, we don't have to rip any of it off and redo the work. So, that has to be done, and part of our plan, I think, we need to look into, see if we can find some funds, extra funds, to complete that facility, so we don't have to go back and forth on it. The other issue is the street vending and homelessness. I think we need to pay a little bit more attention to street vending, because they're taking over. The sidewalks are blocked, people stop at the red curb to pick up fruits or what have you, or food or whatever, it's being sold. It is creating a dangerous situation in some incidents. And I have some photos I can share with my colleagues and the city and everyone else in the next couple of weeks. We need to get a, you know, hold of this thing and hang of this thing, and make sure it's not dangerous. Brand Boulevard, the demonstration project that we have, I'm getting tons of, tons of, tons of, tons of phone calls and emails on weekly basis. We were at the Cars for Cops event, a young kid approached us and said, "Please remove all these things," and he was like in his 20s, because I can't, it takes me 18 minutes to get to the freeway. And now, we have these orange planter boxes, and I don't know why, I can guess why, but I don't want to, you know, misspeak, and some of the crosswalks don't line up, and we need to take a look at that again. I think it's a, I don't think it's a good project, I think it has to be just reversed and turned back to its original condition. And if you have to agendas it to talk about, I don't know when is it coming back, when are we going to address it? Did you have?
Councilmember Carpetian, response to your question about when it's coming back? The original concept of the pilot program, this was a pilot program, was to let it run for six months and then get feedback from the community, and then bring it back with some adjustments that we have made, staff have made, as well as the feedback that we've gotten from the community. So, project, I believe, was completed and in place, the demonstration project, towards the end of May, so we still have a few months to go.
Okay. And I don't have an issue with that, I think we can install two cameras on each direction, so we will see what the issues are on daily basis, because it will be a he said, she said, you know, people who are for it, they say something, and people who are against it, they say something else. So, I think if we can install, if there's a possibility of installing cameras on, you know, that, in each direction, I think that will speak. You know, the project will speak for itself, you don't have to go too far to see what the negative impacts of this project is. The others, one, I think I have one more thing to ask. Oh, the invocation. I think if, if the city clerk's office, I understand that they're shorthanded, is there a possibility that the management office can help the city clerk to organize or schedule the invocation? So, once or twice a month, we will have people of faith to come in and do the invocation. I think that would be, that would be a good thing. That's all I have for right now. Thank you so much.
So, I wasn't going to say anything about the outage, but my home was also impacted, so I got firsthand the text messages. I don't know what happened, because I know GWP is absolutely great at sending out the text messages anytime there's outages. But for some reason, this time around, it notified at 5 o'clock or when it was already out, and then the notification came that, you know, it would be back up at 7, but then we didn't get any notification until, I think it was like past 11:30, 12 o'clock at night. I think Mr. Young is looking at me, wanting to say something, if you want to, please feel free.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. That outage also corresponded to an outage, management system outage. That system went down, and the people that were actually on, that have their finger on the pulse on the outages that were doing social media, didn't know that there was an outage, because the OMS system went down. And we had to get somebody to fix that the next morning. So, that was a big mistake. Unfortunately, that outage wasn't, nobody knew about the outage, because the OMS system didn't automatically let everybody know about the outage. And our social media person has their finger on the pulse on the OMS and didn't know that there was an outage until we informed them.
Okay, so while you're up here, I do have a technical question. When we do have outages, say, a restaurant is impacted, and they have to keep their food at a certain temperature, and because of the outage, they have to then toss the food that's in the fridge, because it no longer meets the criteria of the temperature it needs to be at for a certain amount of hours? And if it is a prolonged outage, is there something for the restaurants to be able to recoup their loss?
Madam Mayor, depending on the circumstances, if the city's at fault, I mean, and there's some legal issues, why it's not always the city's legal responsibility? So, it really does depend on the circumstances. And I hesitate to provide a more detailed explanation in an open setting, but I'm happy to send you a note about it.
Okay, I think it would be helpful for us to know what is available. Okay, all right. I ate all the ice cream, Mr. Young.
That's the best part of the outage, right? Don't want to waste the outage.
He told me not to open up my freezer, but I ate all the ice cream, and then I lost my house. All right. I just wanted to note that I'm going to be traveling to Armenia on a delegation trip that's organized by the State Department next week and the week after. This is actually the first such trip that the State Department is organizing with mayors from all over the US. So, there'll be folks from Pennsylvania and Kansas and so forth that'll be joining. And it is also an opportunity for us to coordinate efforts with our sister cities. And prior to them even knowing that Glendale was sister cities with Gumri, Gumri was actually part of the agenda. It seems like there's just overall general interest in Gumri. And so, this weekend was also the International Kids Festival. I just wanted to give kudos to the four women who came together to put that together. There were thousands of people at Rurigo Park, and I absolutely love the fact that the vendors were all like mom and pops. And so, I also want to take this opportunity to thank our Parks Department, because I know that they also helped facilitate a lot of that, and even like put out notices that this was happening. And I'd like to see similar partnerships be done in the future. I know that they have interest in making this an annual. It would be nice to make sure that the programming is also serving its name. But this is, for those that don't know, June 1st is marked as International Children's Day around the world. I think it's a new concept for the US, but I think the women that were organizing it were originally from Armenia, and it's a very big nationwide festival. And so, I love the fact that they brought this here. I'm hoping that we can maybe coordinate with them in the future. And then, I want to note that as we're sitting here tonight, just like for many years now, our City Hall will be lit for Pride Month. I know that we don't have a commendation tonight, but we will have one next week. I wanted to use this opportunity, just like I do with any of the groups, whether it's been the AAPI or the Armenian, for me to actually personally reach out to each of the clubs. And I finally got the list of everyone about a couple of hours ago, so there will be one next week. And because I won't be here, just a note to our LGBTQ+ community, you are welcomed, you are loved, this is a city for everyone, and we look forward to celebrating pride in the city of Glendale. All right. Anything else? Okay. Next item.
Next item is a community event announcement and oral communication, three minutes. Per the mayor's policy, this item also permits speakers wishing to speak on their general oral communication subject to the three minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. Mayor Asatryan, we have five speaker cards. Our first speaker is Mike Mohill.
Traffic enforcement. Your Glendale Community Newsletter has received several letters and phone calls complaining of the road diet on Brand Boulevard to slow down traffic. Having bikes and buses will not slow down traffic when the public has a purpose when they use their cars. What you are doing is seeing a public outrage for the very few bike riders in Glendale. Already, there have been reported several traffic accidents on North Brand and our fire department trucks are having problems maneuvering when the road diets are enforced. Also a challenge for our buses. Hundreds of new apartments are coming online and more cars will be on our roads, causing road congestion. Council talks about slowing down traffic and bike lanes is not the solution. Please consider hiring more 24/7 a day law enforcement and additional traffic signals for Glen Oaks Boulevard, Lockres Center Boulevard, Verdugo Road, Royal Canyon, Chevy Chase, Rossmore, and the list goes on. Placing more traffic signals throughout the city will also slow down traffic without disturbing our quality of life. Few people live and work in the city of Glendale and riding bikes to work and to shop is not realistic. If road diets are a solution to slowing down traffic, why doesn't Caltrans, you know Caltrans? Install bike lanes along our freeways? Just asking that simple question. Hundreds of new, hundreds of new apartments are coming online and more cars will be on our roads, causing road congestion. More law enforcement and traffic signals are the easy solutions to slow down traffic. If that is the excuse, that is the excuse, please, of road diets and bike lanes. Thank you.
Our next public comment is by Bramley Ashdian.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bramley Ashdian. I'm a proud resident, homeowner, and most importantly, mother living here in Glendale. I stand before you today to address a pressing issue of the unsafe and unsanitary living conditions at the apartment complex located on 400 Paula. I'm certain that you are familiar with this property due to the frequent police presence there. My purpose in speaking today is to express my frustration, concern over the apparent double standard that exists in our city enforcements and codes and ordinances. As a homeowner, I'm required to spend thousands of dollars on permits for any improvement I want to make to my house. I must adhere to any and all strict guidelines to maintain the integrity of our community. However, it seems that the property owner of the complex at 400 Paula is not held to the same standards. Despite numerous complaints over many years, the conditions at this complex remain deplorable. Our city inspectors are well aware of the unlivable conditions, the multiple code violations, graffiti, water, structural damage, hypodermic needles, the pepper, the hypodermic needles that pepper the sidewalks in our city. The police know what I'm talking about, they're there all the time. Is my city council person aware of this? No significant action has been taken to address these issues and you should be aware that it's noted in public record that the occupants residing on site are terrified to say anything in fear of retaliation by the property owner. Well, I can assure you, as a proud descendant from my brave great grandmother who survived the Armenian genocide, I'm not afraid. I stand here today to ask when the safety and well-being of Glendale residents will be prioritized and when our city takes decisive action to enforce the laws and ordinances that are in place to protect us. The current state of this complex poses a serious risk to our neighborhood and our children. I urge you to take immediate and effective measures to ensure that the property owners held accountable and that our community standards are upheld. In front of you, it's not here, but I made everything, they made packets for you guys. I provided you, and forgive me, there is a very large list of records, but it's over 1,700 pages full of code violations. However, I have highlighted where 24 years ago, the complaint and code violation of human waste spewing out of the drains in front of the building still stands. I've called several times only to find out somebody else did too, 24 years ago. I've also included in the packet a letter from the Glendale Police Department urging you to take these matters seriously, and I quote, "The property as it is has existed for decades and has been a blight, a blight and nuisance in a very dangerous place. It is located in such a beautiful area of Glendale and the time has come to reclaim it for the good of the community." That's from 2014. 10 years later, in 2014, here I am, but not as a police officer, but as a mother. Thank you for your time.
Well, can staff provide some update? These are some serious issues that are marked here. So would you be able to do it in a memo for me? I don't want, I don't know if you have the details now and I don't need, we don't need to get into a discussion, but.
We will provide a memo, Mayor.
Okay. And then do we have her contact information?
Yes, we do.
If you can pass that on to us as well. All right.
Our next public comment is by Ray Shelton.
I'm a longtime Glendale resident and homeowner. I urge the council not to light the city hall with pride colors. I say this as a gay man. Pride is an emotion which is naturally felt in the accomplishment of achieving something good. Being gay is not an accomplishment. Rather, the month should be designated, how about COP Month or Family Month or Constitution Month. This council should not be in the job of recognizing anyone's identity or politics. To that end, Alicia Harris has appeared before you several times, calling herself an advocate for the queer community. But there are some things you should know about Alicia Harris. Number one, she's not a resident of Glendale, she lives in Van Nuys. Number two, she's not a lesbian. So why is she up here talking to you? Well, she is an advocate, but it's not an advocate for the individual rights of gay Americans. That battle was won way back in 2015. And I have to note that Harvey Milk was not a hero. He was a socialist and a pedophile. I know because I lived in the Bay Area when he was killed and I was openly gay at the time. You really should choose your heroes more carefully. Not, this city should not be in the job of supporting heterosexuality or homosexuality. I know you're just pandering for votes, Ellen, but you're not a lesbian, so you should keep your mouth shut. Now, Alicia Harris is an advocate for critical race theory, queer theory, and transgender ideology, and she often refers to the queer community. When I was growing up, I would try to do everything I could not to be called a queer. And here she is advocating for the queer community. But of course, there is no queer community. There is no gay community. There are only individuals. And those of you who are heterosexual or straight should be brave enough to stand up and recognize what she is up to. She also appears with these people who can mask themselves. Why are they masking themselves? They certainly can't feel any pride if they're masking themselves, can they? So I asked the city council, don't light the city hall except in red, white, and blue.
Your time is up. Our next speaker is Alan Durham.
Before you go on, clerk, just so everybody's on the same page about the rules of the chamber, we've posted them outside city hall. We're glad everyone is here, but we're asking everyone to follow the rules so we can have a productive meeting. So if you haven't familiarized yourself with it, please, please see the rules outside. Thank you so much.
Mayor Asatryan, members of the council, I'm Alan Durham. It's my pleasure to announce a free outdoor screening of Walt Disney's 1940 animated classic Pinocchio this Saturday, June 8th. It will be in Brand Park in front of the doctor's house on the lawn. No tickets are needed, you just show up, gates open at 5:30. The program starts at seven. Bring a picnic, blankets, lawn chairs, whatever, there'll be free popcorn. This free screening is made possible by the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association, the Alex Film Society, Brand Associates, and the Glendale Historical Society. Technical support, generous technical support is provided from the city's parks and rec department. So please plan to attend, it'll be a great event. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final public comment is by Ricky Tress.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I apologize for my informal approach at this, but I think I come seeking direction. I've been criminalized for who I am and it's something I can't change, it's within my DNA. I was escorted by a unit of police officers from Verdugo Skate Park and the reason being was that I wasn't wearing a helmet and I'm actually unable to wear a helmet. But this, although it was difficult for me to accept this happening to me, I realized that it's something sensible. So it's difficult for me to approach this sensible regulation or rule that I should follow. But this sensible rule has been around long enough for me to realize that there's a demographic that's been created around it and it's, it's based off of DNA in genetics, it's curly hair, it's within my color. And you can see it in the different genres within the sport that Verdugo Skate Park is, therefore, which is skateboarding. The different genres are street and vert, both topics in Olympic skateboarding now. So this sport is becoming formalized and well structured and I believe considerations should be made now within our society to help accommodate the evolution of this sport. I believe that it has great impact in our moral economy and really our financial economy too here in Glendale, being whether it's for services, food or gas for visitors that come from all over the country. So at this point, I, I've just mentioned sort of like my human experience in restraining and this goes back 15 years that I've taken place in my profession and I'm still unfamiliar with the topic of, in the genre, vert skateboarding due to similar restrictions, not just in our city, but really all over the world. So again, adding to the difficulty of me even approaching something so sensible is that it's sensible enough to happen everywhere. So it's not just the city, but it's other cities that, I don't know if it's me having to approach the situation to make it something, but it's, I believe, something worthy of consideration. I think I'll try to formalize the argument a little better and maybe get some data to help us in the future, but thank you for now.
Thank you.
That is all. Next are action items. The first item, item A, is human resources regarding memorandum of understanding between the city of Glendale and Glendale Management Association on behalf of sworn officers, managers, police, sworn police managers. One, resolution approving and adopting the MOU between the city of Glendale and Glendale Management Association sworn police managers commencing July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. Two, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees covered by the GMA MOU.
All right. Mr. Glanion.
Thank you, Mayor Asatryan, member of city council. So in December of 2023, we started negotiations with representatives from the Glendale Management Association, or GMA, on behalf of the sworn police managers, are comprised of 17 police lieutenants as well as police captains. The current MOU expires on June 30th of this year and after six months of negotiations, we are bringing forward a three-year MOU, effective July 1st of 2024 through June 30th of 2027. The primary objective for these negotiations were to address compensation and ensure that the police managers maintain a competitive position in the labor market and to prevent compaction with their subordinates. Another objective was to incentivize promotion to management ranks, especially with the additional responsibilities that they take on and loss of overtime potential. We believe this agreement, this MOU, provides a fair across-the-board cost of living adjustment that includes 4% effective July 1st, 2024, 5% effective July 1st, 2025, and another 5% effective July 1st, 2026. It also includes a $25 deferred compensation match effective July 1st, 2025, a 1% adjustment to salary step seven, and a 400 supervisory and management post-pay adjustment effective July of 2026. The entire package will cost just over $2.5 million and with that, I respectfully approve, I respectfully request and recommend your approval of the resolution and the MOU.
This was pretty fast, right?
It took six months of negotiations and both the city team as well as the general managers, GPOA, police managers, that, GMA on behalf of the police managers, quite a few back and forth. I'm proud to say that they've done an excellent job. Wanted to thank both teams, but we've been able to bring this MOU forward for your consideration.
Do we have any speakers?
We have two speaker cards.
Before we go on to the speakers, do my colleagues have any questions, comments they want to make?
No, just, just to thank staff and to thank the GMA organization for engaging in good, healthy, sometimes tough, but fair negotiations.
All right. Take the comments.
The first public comment is by Mike Mohill.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I love my police department, I love all the staff, I love them all, ask them, but I can't afford them anymore. But I can't afford them anymore. Cannot afford them. When they retire with 90% of last year's salary as their pension for life, and I'm living on social security and thousands of millions of other people in the world are too, how come they get 90% of last year's salary as their pension for life? Now, how did that all start? I believe the year was 1999, when Greg Graves was the governor, and he and the Democratic Party with the Calpers said, you know what? The stock market can be great forever, and we can afford to pay our safety people lots of money, and then 90% is going to be retrospective. Okay? Well, guess what? The stock market went up and down and up, and today we have totally in this city about $1 billion of unfunded pension obligations. What you were doing when you approved this pay raise, don't get me wrong, I'm sure I'd love to pay them for currently working, but not a pension at 90%, but you're telling me and the viewing audience that your children and grandchildren are going to be stuck with these public pension obligations. When are you going to stop it? Tonight would be a great night to say, you know what? No more. Send a message to the rest of the state of California that Glendale's going to be different. Now, Glendale City Council cannot affect what goes on in Sacramento or Washington DC, but you do have the power to say no to pay raises. You can go ahead and tell Calpers to go pound sand, as they would say. You know, you have children, Mr. Vartan, okay? Mr. Najarian, okay? A lot of people in this room have children, and you're going to saddle them with these pension obligations. Who gets 90% of their last year's salary as their pension for life? 90%! And they're retiring at the age 50 or 55? 50 or 55? Don't get me wrong, I love my police firemen, but I can't afford it. If they want, let them have great salaries upfront, but not a pension for life at 90%. Thank you.
Our next comment is by Robert William.
Good evening, Mayor Satrion and members of city council. I'm Captain Robert William, and I'm here on behalf of all of the sworn police managers with a prepared statement to express our gratitude for your continuous support in public safety in our city. Your pending approval of these contracts for public safety bargaining groups is greatly appreciated. This will undoubtedly keep Glendale PD competitive in the job market. However, this is just one example of your support. More importantly, you have shown unwavering commitment through your investment in our recent initiatives such as purchasing new technology, updating our equipment, and providing advanced training for our personnel. All of these efforts exemplify your dedication to the well-being of our community. We also want to recognize that the city staff who worked diligently with our bargaining group, Assistant City Manager, Mr. John Tuktalian, Chief Human Resource Officer, Ms. Paula Adams, and Finance Director, Mr. Jason Bradford, and the rest of the city team. Thank you. Balancing fiscal responsibility while understanding the importance of keeping Glendale PD a competitive agency within the law enforcement profession is no small task. Your efforts have ensured that our city remains a leader in public safety, and for that, we are grateful. Lastly, and certainly not least, we want to thank our community. We extend our deepest thanks to you. Our officers and staff feel and see your support every day. We deeply value your trust in us to perform our duties with dedication and integrity, and we are committed to protecting Glendale with the highest standards of excellence. Once again, thank you all for your support and partnership in making Glendale safer and stronger.
Thank you. Mr. Garbendian?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to thank everyone who was part of the negotiation, and I think it's a fair outcome for all parties. Want to thank our police department, the management, all the sworn officers and non-sworn officers, the entire PD for, for the hard work that they do. I know Mr. Mohill has a, a good point as far as when you compare the retirement plan, public sector versus private sector. Tonight, we are not making any decision on the, on the retirement part of this, this, this entire Calpers issue. It's a huge issue. It's $1 billion or what have you in liabilities. I don't know who can pay for that. I don't think I can in my lifetime, but I think it's some, another issue to discuss and maybe other, other council meetings to see how are we going to manage all of our contracts, our liabilities, and yet provide a safe, provide safety for, for our community and our community members. I think these are separate issues that I just want to let everyone know that. I, I know, Mr. Mohill, I'm sure you're aware that we're not making any decision on the retirement part of this entire equation, if you will. But point well taken. We, we had a Calper, what, what did they call it? A ribbon committee, blue ribbon committee? I don't know what happened to that and what the suggestion was. I, I don't know what, what the outcome was, what the recommendations were, and there are good, there were good people, very, very knowledgeable people on that, on that committee. I don't know what happened to it. This is an ongoing issue that we have to address. I just want to let you know and let everyone know that tonight's decision has nothing to do with the retirement part of the, our employees. So with that, I, I move the item.
Well, before you move the item, Councilmember Najarian has comments, and so do I. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm happy that we came to an agreement on this contract. These are, I believe, we said 17 members of the police department. They are lieutenants and captains, and we tasked them with managing the rest of the police force, of course, under the direction of the chief and deputy chief as well. It is becoming more and more difficult for our officers to do their job because we are still essentially understaffed, and it is very important that we have astute managers who know how to apportion and direct our resources, our officers, to the appropriate place, the appropriate time. When there was a surge in crime in the foothills, or actually in the hills, the South American gangs were coming in, it was these managers who decided how to apportion the troops, and I know even some of them were up there in their patrol vehicles, keeping an eye out. So the issue of cost is, is important. The issue of pensions is something that is out of our hands. I wish that in 1999, the Calpers and the movement was not to extend such generous benefits, but that has already been done. We can't turn the clock back, and we're in a very competitive field where cities, even like Los Angeles, have given up on hiring their full contingency of police officers because it's so hard to find them, train them, and keep them employed. So it's my goal, and some of these comments also will spill over and apply to the next item, which is our rank-and-file officers. We need to keep every single police officer that we have on the force, keep them motivated, keep them happy, so they spend the rest of their lives with Glendale, and we don't lose them to other jurisdictions in the meantime. They learn our city, they learn our residents, they learn to love you, Mr. Mohill, and I'm very happy that we have a police force with the managers and the chief and deputy chief leading our patrol officers, and it's a constant battle. I think we're very fortunate to have such a force with us. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank GMA and the sworn police managers. I do have to disagree on this whole conversation about retirement and pensions. I think we are not just policymakers. I've said this time and again, we're also employers, and ensuring that our employees retire with dignity should be as important. When we talk about all the senior services that we end up creating for our community members, we can't make ends meet. That's really because of the lack of retire, the proper retirement system in the private sector. And so I'm honored to have a system that allows for our employees to retire with dignity. You know, these comments obviously go to the Police Officers Association, all of our employees, and so I'm happy to have that larger conversation, but when we talk about the future of our budget, that is why it's so critical for us to look at creative revenue opportunities to make sure that we're closing the gap and being responsible without hurting the livelihood of those who have served our city as employees or, or otherwise. So with that, I recognize that we have a motion. If we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Clark Petian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Satrion?
Next item.
Next item is item B. Action item B, Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and the Glendale Police Officers Association. One, resolution approving and adopting the MOU between the City of Glendale and Glendale Police Officers Association commencing July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. Two, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees covered by the Glendale Police Officers Association MOU.
I'm assuming Mr. Galanian would like to make some comments.
Mayor Satrion, member of city council, the Glendale Police Officers Association, or GPOA, is the employee bargaining unit that represents 234 positions, including police recruit, police officer recruit, police officer, and police sergeant. We started negotiations with the GPOA in January of this year. After five months of negotiations, we are pleased to bring forward a three-year MOU similar to the previous MOU, which will run effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th of 2027. During the negotiations, there were two sets of objectives and priorities. On the city side, the primary objective was to work towards a fair and reasonable labor agreement while recognizing, as you noted, the city's long-range financial obligations. The primary objective of the GPOA side was to ensure that Glendale Police continues to maintain the high quality of services that they currently provide and remain an employer of choice in the law enforcement field. After months of negotiations, both parties have come to terms designed to meet the priorities and objectives that I mentioned. This MOU, we believe, is a fair and reasonable compromise that addresses the interests of both parties, and specifically, it includes 4.5% cost-of-living adjustment COLA effective July 1st, 2024, a 5.5% COLA effective July 1st, 2025, and a 4% COLA effective July 1st, 2026, plus a 1.75% retirement cost share reduction for Pepper employees effective July 1st, 2025, a $25 deferred compensation match effective July 1st, 2025, reduction in cost share of medical premiums. This would be equivalent to GMA police, a 1% adjustment to salary step seven effective July 1st, 2025, an increase in specialty assignment pay of 1.5% effective July 1st, 2025, a $200 supervisory post-pay adjustment, an education post-pay adjustment, both effective July 1st of this year. The total package that I, includes all of these elements is $25.6 million over the three-year period. And again, I wanted to extend my deepest gratitude for both teams on city sides and GPOA side for months of painful, at times painful, negotiation. It's never an easy task, but they've been able to come to terms that we believe is fair and reasonable, and with that, I respectfully recommend your approval of the resolution and the three-year MOU. And we're available for questions if you have any.
We have any speakers on the side?
Mayor Satrion, we have one speaker card. Mike Mohill is the speaker.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. May I applaud you all? You're kicking the can down, kicking the can down the road again. Kicking the can down the road again. The pension committee blue ribbon? What did you do with it? You just note and filed it, and you did nothing. We must stop it for the children and the grandchildren who are in this room and watching TV. You are kicking the can down the road. We should honor our contract with our current police and firemen, all city employees, but going forward, all city employees must be on social security and a 401K plan, just like the folks who have to pay the bills. Are they special? I don't know. I think they are. I'm on social security, and they're getting pensions that I wish, I envied. I made a college, when I left, when I entered, when I left the Army and didn't go to college, et cetera, I should have joined and worked for the City of Glendale, any department. I wouldn't be struggling today. As a city employee, that either be a police or a fireman, you name the, you name the department. They're rich. They're the envy of the non-working, the non-union people. You need to go ahead and place everybody all new. Listen, you can do it. It's a matter of if you got the chosba to do it. Do you have the chosba? You know what I mean by that? Some people spell it B-A-L-L-S. Take it, take a chance. You all have kids. Is it fair for them to continue having, having the adults in the room kick the can down the road? Kick the can down, and you know it. $300,000, $300,000 pensions for life, city manager, city attorney, you name the managers in the city in this room, and throughout the state of California. We're not unique, Glendale, but we can be unique by being the first city to say, we're not going to kick the can down the road again. You're all for law and order. I remember in 2020, some of you called for Black Lives Matter. Who called for what? Defending our, defending our police department, and now you're going to give them all pay Why don't we be consistent? I'm not going to single out any one of you, but you know who you are who call for defunding the police department in this room? And now you're giving them, and now you're saying, well, we need to honor these policemen. After all, we, we need them to protect us. Yes, protect me, not you, because you've had your chance to show your colors. Goodbye.
That it?
That's all.
All right. Any comments?
No, just again, thank you to everybody who was involved in these negotiations. I think it was a fair outcome. I believe we do need to be competitive in the labor market. It's kind of hard to say, you know, we want to bring in more police to do traffic enforcement if we're not going to be competitive, because then not only will we not bring the new people in, we'll lose the ones we have. So we have a great police force. We want to keep people on, Councilmember Najarian said, for life. I think maybe career, okay? Not the entire life. We'll let them retire, okay? But we would like them to spend the rest of their careers in Glendale, and I'm proud that we have the force that we do.
I also thank our police officers. The Glendale Police Foundation actually had an event last week to honor our finest at the police department. I did during that time, and I have previously said how proud I am of our police department and what it stands for. We are an example to police departments across the nation. I also want to take this opportunity because I see in the audience, we have our new PIO, Bahia Abrahamian, here, and so I wanted to take this.
And so I wanted to take this opportunity to welcome you in your new position. I did see that you did your first interview and you're officially famous in Armenia. And I'll say that, you know, when we talk about diversity and representation, the fact that when the reporter reached out asking, they wanted to do a segment on Glendale's police department, and interestingly enough, a lot of the community members that live here get their news from Armenia and it travels like kind of back here. The, the best part of it all was the fact that you could even select the dialect that they were looking for, the background they were looking for, and that speaks volumes of our values here in Glendale. And so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that was involved in negotiating. And whatever I said previously applies obviously to this item as well. And so if I have a motion to...
I'll move the item. Second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Satchian?
Yes. Next item.
Next item is Action Item C, Police Regarding Adoption of an Urban Wildlife Management Plan. One Motion to Adopt and Implement the Proposed Urban Wildlife Management Plan.
Coyotes.
Mayor Satchian, Member City Council, as a follow-up to Councilmember Brotman's request, our police department in partnership with Pasadena Humane Society, if adopted, plans to implement an urban wildlife management plan for the city, which will serve to educate the community and document and track encounters with and sightings of wildlife. And with that, I am going to invite Lieutenant Mark Hess to the podium for a brief presentation. Want to note that Lieutenant Hess will be, has been working on his coyote whispering skills recently.
That's correct. Mayor Satchian, good evening, members of city council, city staff. I'd like to thank you, first of all, for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. And before we get started with the PowerPoint, I just want to quickly point out that one of the best parts about living and working in Glendale is being able to enjoy the comforts of the city while at the same time being close to the natural beauty of the Verdugo Mountains, the Angeles National Forest, and many other parks and open spaces that we have within the city. However, with this beauty comes inevitable run-ins with wildlife, and that includes coyotes. To promote community safety and provide information about managing wildlife in our neighborhoods, we are here to seek to adopt and implement an urban wildlife management plan. The plan will offer tools and tips to help educate residents and keep them safe, and it will provide a better understanding of what we can do to help minimize encounters and be able to safely coexist with wildlife. So in partnership with Pasadena Humane and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, we're seeking to adopt a wildlife management plan to address these issues which directly affect our community members and residents. It should be noted that the California Department of Fish and Wildlife has ultimate authority and jurisdiction over all wildlife issues that occur within our city. Pasadena Humane is contacted, contracted through our city and overseen by the police department. And Pasadena Humane primarily oversees the animal care and control within our city limits. They do respond to wildlife in some instances, but for the most part, it's in response to rescue and rehabilitation efforts for injured animals. They will also offer educational campaigns, community presentations, workshops, and webinars for our community members. And they'll respond out to properties for actual property inspections and to help homeowners with conflict mitigation efforts. I'm very fortunate to have two representatives from Pasadena Humane here with me today. And they are Lauren Hamlet, she's the Director of Wildlife Education and Services. And we also have Dr. Maria Perdick, she's the Chief Veterinarian for Pasadena Humane. So at the end of this presentation, they can come up and help with, answer any questions you may have. So this plan is a 30-page plan which will provide guidance to staff when responding to wildlife concerns with the aim to protect wildlife and prevent injury or disease within the community. It'll apply a preventative approach to reduce or eliminate conditions that attract wildlife. And it will also lay out guidance to our residents and community members about what they can specifically do to take away items that attract wildlife to their residences and within their community. The biggest thing this plan will help us with is creating a reporting site to effectively track and document wildlife sightings, and that'll help identify animal behavior and potential hotspots within our city. So currently, the Glendale Police, or the City of Glendale has no official wildlife plan in place. We do have on our police department website, limited educational material for the public to access and read and review. And we have a very ineffective process to document and track wildlife in place right now. Some of the benefits of this plan, the accessibility, top left of the PowerPoint, this plan will be web-based and very easily accessible for everybody. Tracking and monitoring, submitted encounters will be tracked and monitored by the Glendale Police Department personnel. Information that's submitted will be received real-time and monitored and tracked daily. Once we identify potential upticks or hotspots where reports are being issued, we can then direct our mitigation efforts and attempt to assist with conflict mitigation. Anyone can access this site for educational purposes, direction, guidance, and reporting. And the plan will portray our city's philosophy regarding human-wildlife coexistence and our humane responses to wildlife encounters. Lastly, the Pasadena Humane, the services will remain intact as far as their contract goes. Nothing changes with the contract, and there's no additional charge or extra fees associated with this plan. The plan works around a three-pronged strategic approach based around public education, enforcement, and public safety. In regards to education, it's designed around the peaceful coexistence with wildlife. It provides information to the public pertaining to wildlife encounters, issues, and concerns. And it's important that we educate our residents about what they can do specifically to manage their properties, pets, reduce attractants, and really reshape animals' behavior through proper hazing techniques. The ultimate goal is to continue keeping wildlife, in particular coyotes, afraid of humans. That's our ultimate goal. Enforcement, we have laws and regulations prohibiting feeding of wildlife. Glendale has specific Glendale Municipal Code sections in place as we speak to address this situation. And it, as it pertains to safety, the protection of public through the implementation of a tiered response for targeted responses. In some instances, Pasadena Humane Society and California Department of Fish and Wildlife will respond to address wildlife issues that pose an immediate threat of disease or injury to the community. So monitoring and data collection are critical elements of an effective urban wildlife management plan. It's important to encourage people, encourage people to report sightings and encounters, and for us to do a better job providing information on how to do so. We feel that more data equates to more accurate response measures, and we need to make people aware of, that the plan actually exists. So promotion of this plan and its reporting tool will be highlighted on social media sites through the Glendale Police Department, such as Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Nextdoor, and we're also going to plan on posting a, a story on our City Connection newsletter just to get the word out that this plan actually exists. People will be directed to the city's homepage to access the site. Reported information will be received real-time, as I mentioned, and monitored by Glendale personnel. And therefore, we can target our responses, and our educational efforts can be directed to areas where we're seeing an increase in activity. So the next two slides are going to kind of compare our current reporting and monitoring and our proposed reporting and monitoring. So this slide here is what we have in place now. A reported sighting or encounter is entered with very limited information. Basically consists of the type of animal, the date and time, and the location where it was seen. The location of the sighting or the encounter is then placed on a map, and the reported information refreshes every seven days and removed from the map resulting in lost information. Nothing is currently in place to track and monitor the data received, resulting in lost data and the inability to direct our mitigation efforts. So the proposed reporting plan is a reported sighting or encounter will be submitted with more details in the same manner as it currently is. However, dropdown menus, menus will populate to help obtain more accurate information as far as animal behavior or specific location. Animal behavior meaning, does the animal appear sick or injured? Is it stalking the, the reporting party? Is it coming within close proximity? Things that we want to know how these animals are behaving. Are they skittish, which is what we want? That's the normal behavior of a coyote. So we want to know if animals are acting how they should, or if they're becoming more friendly or less scared of human interaction. Regarding the specific location, another, again, another dropdown menu will, will occur, at which time it'll kind of elicit more information. Was the coyote seen on a sidewalk, on a hillside? Was it in someone's backyard? Was it in a school, et cetera? The location of the sighting and encounter will then be placed on the map, much as it does now, but it will stay there for an entire month. Once the map is refreshed with a new month, the previous maps will remain on the site for historical data comparison. So it'll stay basically in, virtually forever. Reported information will be received real-time, and the information will be viewed and analyzed daily. By doing this, we'll be able to identify hotspots, upticks, and sightings, which will assist us with, again, targeted campaigns, education, and other mitigation efforts. Some of these mitigation efforts can take the form of pamphlet distribution within, within a certain area, posting signage, either yard signs, signage on utility poles, just that there's, be aware of coyotes, the website to contact if there's any sightings, and maybe physical deterrents such as self-closing trash can lids in public areas and whatnot, just to help address the situation. And then lastly, this is one of the pages directly out of the management plan. It's a tiered response guide based on animal behavior and the type of interaction, and it provides guidance on how to make your report. So when somebody goes onto this site, it'll lay out the animal's exhibited behavior. It'll then indicate the type of interaction, which is, you have observation, sighting, encounter, pet attack, or an actual attack. And then it lays out a threat, colored threat level from green, yellow, orange, to red. And based on whatever encounter that person had, whatever it marries up with or is most, most similar to, it basically directs that person where to make their report. The majority of the reporting is going to be to the Glendale Police Department homepage, because again, it's just going to be for statistical analysis for us to, to basically identify where problems are happening. There are four, four instances where Pasadena Humane is the person to contact, and that's more an elevated level where it might possibly warrant a field response from Pasadena Humane. In the, in the rare event that there's a coyote bite, or what, any animal bite or attack, it's, it's referred to as an attack under threat level red, and citizens are just directed to call 911, because our police dispatch center will then reach out to Fish and Wildlife, Pasadena Humane, along with the police department to take a report. It's going to be a full poll on an event like that. And with that, that concludes the presentation. If you have any other questions.
Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, thank you. Is there, is there a phone number that they can call? Because I didn't see it here, it's just mostly websites and stuff like that.
Yes, in the plan, it lays out Pasadena Humane's direct phone number. And there's also going to be a phone number for Fish and Games Enforcement Line regarding regulations and general information. And that's probably going to be the best phone number to call if they have a situation where they want direction and guidance of what they can do. But all those phone numbers will be laid out in the plan.
But do you have one or two numbers that they can give up today?
Yes.
Okay, if you don't mind.
Sure. The Fish and Game phone number is 562-598-1032. And again, that's the enforcement line for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the regulations and general information.
Yeah, because we live in the woodlands and it's like a daily, not daily, maybe twice a week or sometimes three times a week, we see them in different streets. And I know there are a couple of properties that it's like they have a den there, they have this luscious landscaping, but it's very dense and they maintain it really well. It's like you're in a, you live in a village. But I believe they called the Pasadena Humane Society and they were, coyotes were removed once or twice, but they're coming back. And it's like, hey, man, what's happening? It's, it's their house. They just, they just walk around and go to their, to their backyard and didn't cause a danger yet to anyone, but I don't know what can be done. How, how do you, how do you, what is the, what is the situation in that, in this, in this? What can they do in this situation?
Yeah, so we do not provide relocation or trapping of healthy wildlife services. Fish and Wildlife has to grant those permits. So if they were getting those coyotes trapped, and likely it would have been that they were being trapped and euthanized by a private company, but relocation is not permitted. And so with fish, with us, what we can do is we can come provide a property evaluation. And we also have a checklist that they can just do on their own, where they can go through, and I believe it's part of the plan that there's a property audit checklist as one of the appendixes, so they can go through and, and go through their own property and look and see, hey, where are these resources? And kind of follow through that. That would help prevent the coyotes from wanting to use their property as a really lovely den site, which it sounds like it is right now. Because yeah, if you just take and remove the coyotes, if you don't change the property at all or secure it in any way, then another group of coyotes is just going to move right in.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Brotman?
Okay, I've got a few questions. First of all, I guess you, you probably worked on the Pasadena plan. Are there any major differences between ours and Pasadena's, or are they virtually identical?
They're very, very similar.
Very similar.
Yeah, very, very similar.
Okay. And I read through this, I thought it was really great. I wonder if you could maybe explain just a little bit more to the public, why targeted euthanization or relocation doesn't work? I know it's explained pretty well in the, in the, in the, in the report about how, you know, packs break up, and then there are these individuals and, you know. Could you maybe very briefly, like, explain to people who, who say to us, you know, just get rid of them?
Yeah.
Why that just isn't a feasible solution?
Yeah, so first of all, it's, it's very expensive, and it's not an effective long-term solution, because as I was mentioning about the property owner before, it creates a vacuum effect. So if coyotes are removed and the resources are still there and everything else remains the same, other coyotes will just move in. And, and California, you know, has a history of extirpating, you know, the grizzly bears, which are on our state flag, but no longer exist here. And they tried to do that with coyotes all across the US back in the day. And coyotes are just extremely resilient, and they've never been able to, to be, they've always come back. And so, and so it's just, like you're saying with the, with the pack structure, there's usually two, some people refer to them as alpha male and female. And so they'll have pups once, sometimes twice a year, usually just once a year about this time of year, which might seem, which might be why you're seeing more coyotes out, because they're protecting their dens. But they also have some, some related younger adults usually in their pack as well that aren't breeding. aren't breeding. And so if you are indiscriminately trapping and euthanizing coyotes, and you break up a pack in this way, those other coyotes that weren't breeding before would start their own packs and start breeding, so you can be actually making the issue worse, because if the resources are still available, coyotes are going to have pups in accordance with the available resources. So if there's more resources available, because one of the coyotes over here got trapped and removed, and their pack got broken up, all of a sudden, we're like, hey, we can have more pups, because there's more resources now. So it's kind of one of those evolutionary traits that coyotes have developed, to be super well-adapted to the urban environment. They are omnivorous, and they, you know, they'll eat a lot of different things. They're very smart. They're like our dogs' brilliant cousins, so they can figure out how to get in and out of places really well without being seen. And so really, we want to approach this with evidence-based research, and there's a lot of research that shows that trapping and killing indiscriminately, it's just gonna make the problem worse in the long run. Does that sort of answer the question?
Yeah, yeah, that's very good. And then kind of similar to what Councilmember Garpetian was asking you, so what, I mean, I'm familiar with a few places where I tend to see them a lot. I think everybody knows around Kenneth Village, Glenwood, that area, there are a whole lot there. And I've heard people say, well, they're, they've got a den in the cemetery, you know? I've heard in other places where somebody was complaining that there was an abandoned property, and that they had been able to get into maybe a basement, or into, into a space that wasn't being lived in. So when you have situations like, you know, you clearly, or you suspect that there's a concentration in an area, what's the right thing to do? Is it to break that up, or is it not? And, you know, for the neighbor living next to the house that's abandoned, that's already frustrated that it's abandoned, and now it's become a breeding ground, like, how do we, how do we respond to that?
Yeah, great question. Thank you. You can go.
I'm gonna jump in and take that question, and say that I think that really speaks to the need for an urban wildlife plan, because you can't expect just one person who's making a phone call to deal with a situation that's gonna take a community or a neighborhood to address. And so that's why having a map where you're reporting these sightings, and you're confirming these hotspots, and then you're having multiple people who are having signs put up, so everybody knows that there's an issue, and then everybody who's in that area understands what they need to do in order to change that situation, and not have those coyotes continue to be there. And so, you know, if you have a group of two or three people who are doing some hazing, and they're removing some brush, if there's not a whole group of people, and it's just right there, then it's not really going to be effective. So this really speaks to getting the entire community involved, and having the community understand what's needed in order to kind of keep the coyotes wild and in their, in their own areas, and keep the humans and the people safe.
Okay, good. I've got a few more here. Are there any incidents that we, incidences that we know of, of dogs that are on a leash? Small dogs that are on a leash being taken by a coyote? Have there been any in Glendale recently?
I don't know that data off the top of my head.
Okay, is that, is that fairly, that's a fairly uncommon thing, or is that something we're seeing happen around the region?
That would be considered pretty abnormal coyote behavior. It does, it does happen.
It does happen.
But much less often than an off-leash dog unattended, or, you know, neighborhood cats. It's one of the best strategies for keeping your pet safe, is to keep your pet on a six-foot or shorter leash with you, because coyotes that are, you know, in the normal urban environment, relatively skittish of humans for the most part, they're not gonna want to come that close to a person. And if they are getting that close to a person within that six-foot radius that you have on the leash, that's considered, oh, sorry. That would be considered abnormal coyote behavior, and we would want to really focus teaching those neighbors how to appropriately haze that coyote, so that we can help adjust that behavior back to being, to being more afraid of people and less habituated.
Okay, okay. And then, one thing, this isn't really so much a question for you, it's more, it's more for staff. So I know a lot of this is about getting people to report what they're seeing. Just a suggestion that maybe we could use the My Glendale app? I don't know if you think that would be helpful, to have something on there where people could report seeing coyotes, just like they report, you know, whatever, a pothole, or, or trash that's being left on the street?
Yeah.
Another, just another channel?
Right, yeah, that would be completely feasible. And then whoever's monitoring and tracking the incoming emails based on this site, they can just also be linked into the My Glendale app, and to, and just combine the data. That would, that would work.
Okay, that's something I would think about. And then the other thing I've thought about many times is, I live right next to Verdugo Park. I think three of us live very close to Verdugo Park, and, and if you go in there after there's been a lot of picnicking on the weekend, you see all this trash all over the place. And I'm pretty sure it's not the people, it's whatever animals are getting in there. Maybe not even coyotes, but raccoons or whatever.
Crows.
Crows, crows, yes. Crows are notorious for that. So I'm wondering why we don't have closed lids on the trash cans in our parks? It seems like that would be a smart thing for us to do.
So Mr. Brotman, I reached out to Public Service Administrator Chris Peplo, and he indicated that currently they have three bear-proof metal containers bolted to the ground at Duke Magian Park. They said that that's the only park that they have really bear issues. They said they just recently put 15 plastic trash cans in at Nibley Park with the self-closing lids that are kind of spring-shut. They said that that works absolutely phenomenal for coyotes and crows. Because it was so successful, they just purchased 105 more dome lids, and they're gonna outfit all of Bran Park and Verdugo Park with these Rubbermaid brand, but they're self-closing dome lids that keep all the small critters, crows, and coyotes out.
Okay, sounds like something we should do everywhere where we have people picnicking and barbecuing, and there's all kind of goodies that get left behind. Okay. And then just the very last thing I have is, you know, obviously the public outreach and communication is key, and it's good that you said, you know, if there's a hotspot, you can make a specific effort, maybe door hangers, or whatever, to really get to people in that community. I would also suggest, you know, getting on some of the community websites, like Nextdoor, Living in Glendale, I think is a Facebook, you know, there are a number of these sites, and you, there's lots of times coyote conversations, and it would be good if somebody could kind of monitor that, and maybe pipe in with a, with a message to, hey, here's this resource, here's, we have a plan, and we have a website, and we have, you know, you can, you can report it. I think that would be really excellent.
Yeah, and speaking with our department's communication manager, he's, he's basically gonna blast this information out to as many sites as he can.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I actually have some comments back, the dogs-on-a-leash situation. It actually happened with me and Buddy. We were literally walking on a leash, and the coyote came from the back, and I yanked the leash, and just like, he plopped over into my arms. But there was one, like, he literally had his mouth on his tail at that point, and there was another coyote approaching. So, I mean, like, maybe this would be a moment of education of, I don't know if I should have done that, but I mean, it was an instinctual reaction, because I didn't know what else to do, right?
No, that's right. Absolutely.
But, I mean, it has actually occurred, so I don't know. There's a huge coyote issue in my neighborhood. I know that people are now walking in groups. When they're walking at night, they're just kind of like everywhere. And that's around the, I don't know, Columbus Stalker area, like Valley View and stuff, all the way to Central. We see them all the time, especially at night. I think when we're talking about outreach, you know, you're giving out the phone number, and you're telling people to call. Does the Pasadena Humane Society have people that speak Armenian and Spanish? That's a huge thing for us here.
So we have people who speak Spanish, and then we also have several translator services that we use. We can't always guarantee that we have an on-campus person to speak Armenian. However, we do use several different translation services, so all of our materials are available in Armenian, and then all of our, any phone call that we have, we can have that translated.
So if somebody called in, and they're speaking Armenian?
We would, it would probably be about two minutes for us to get a hold and run everything through the, the translation service that we use, but they would be able to, to get, you know, information.
How would you know? Hmm? How would you know which language?
We use software in order to identify it.
Okay, all right, cool. And then, so the materials are all also being translated into the different languages?
So currently, the information that we have on our website now is, it's basically has Google Translate attached to it, so we have about 20, 20 translations, languages. But anyways, going on, we have a reliable, it's called Reliable Translations. I guess our department has, has used it before. They reside in the city, and we can reach out to them. I believe we were going to do Korean, Armenian, and Spanish for the actual urban wildlife management plan.
Okay. Reliable translations, I don't know. I can't speak to, but I've said this time and again, Google Translate does not work for Armenian whatsoever. I don't know how it is for other languages, but I've made it very clear to staff that nothing from this city hall should be done with Google Translate, because it just, it's a bunch of gibberish.
Good enough.
Okay? So if you can please take that into account.
Absolutely.
I don't know about reliable translation, but I would have some folks in the city that can.
That's our firm.
Okay, all right, okay, cool. And then the trash bins, I'm actually excited about, because students from Clark had a project for their, like, environmental justice class, and they went up to clean up Bran Park, and then they reached out to me saying, how come the trash bins don't have lids? And that creates a lot of trash, and just a mess, so glad to hear that. I'm gonna report back to them.
That should be.
I told them I'm actually gonna bring it up during the council meeting today, so glad to hear that. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Do you need anything from us?
No, ma'am.
Yeah, we need to.
All right.
Need a motion for this?
All right.
I'll move the item.
Whatever.
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Harpetian, Kasakian, Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Astachian.
Yes. Next item.
Thank you.
Next item is Action Item D, Administrative Services, Finance Regarding Adoption of the City's Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Grand Appropriations Limit. One Resolution Adopting Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Grand Appropriations Limit.
All right. Do we have a presentation on this? We don't? Okay.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
We've all been through this before.
Every year.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Harpetian, Kasakian, Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Astachian.
Yes, next item.
Next item is Action Item E, Glendale Water and Power, Regarding Fiscal Year 2023-2024. Glendale Water and Power Transfer. One Resolution Reducing the Percentage of Operating Revenues to Be Transferred from Glendale Water and Power Electric to the General Reserve Fund for Fiscal Year 2023-2024.
All right, do we have a report on this?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Astachian, members of the council. This report is to affirm the transfer from the GWP Electric Fund for 2324, our current fiscal year. City Charter requires the transfer 25% of annual operating electric revenues unless a lower percentage is approved by the council. City has historically transferred an amount less than 25% by adopting a resolution setting a lower amount for 2324. The amount to be transferred is estimated at 24.3 million, or 10% of the electric operating revenue. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I do have a question, a question. Do you know what historically is the most that we've ever transferred in terms of percentage, and what is the least?
The data I have is back to fiscal year 2011-12, and that was 13.7% of the operating revenue. I don't have it before that.
Okay.
It's probably near the highest. Before 2010, 11, or 11, 12, we used to transfer, remember, we used to transfer a portion from water and a portion from electric. We had to stop them from the water due to court cases, and so that bumped up the electric to the higher number that Mr. Bradford referred to, and it's ever since has gone down to the 10%. I think the lowest is probably slightly below the 10% that we charged two years ago.
We did 9% in fiscal year 2021.
Why did we do that? I mean, I was here, but I don't, was that, was that COVID?
Yes.
It was COVID related.
After the pandemic, because of the financial impacts that the pandemic had on our residents, and.
Okay, so we went down nine, and now 10 is kind of our, our standard. Okay, all right, thanks a lot. If there are no other questions, I'll move the item, so.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman.
Yes.
Harpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian, Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Astachian.
Yes, next item.
Next are hearings. Hearing A, Administrative Services, Finance Regarding Fiscal Year 2024-2025, Citywide Budget Hearing and Adoption. One, Hold a Public Hearing on the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Proposed Citywide Budget and Changes to the Citywide Fee Schedule. Two, Resolution Adopting the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 City of Glendale Budget. Three, Resolution Establishing Certain Fees and Increasing/Decreasing/Modifying Certain Fees for Various Services Provided by the City, and Adopting Changes to the Comprehensive Citywide Fee Schedule for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Four, Resolution Establishing Certain Fees and Increasing/Decreasing/Modifying Certain Existing Fees for Public Works, Community Development, and Fire-Related Services, Permits, and Certificates. Five, Resolution of Appropriation for Fiscal Year 2023-2024 to Transfer Funds in the Amount of $10 Million from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund.
All right. The hearing is open at 7:47. Mr. Kalanian.
Yes, Mayor Astachian, member of City Council. This is the, tonight, the item is the last step in the, our budget process for fiscal year 2425. As you know, you have sat through four budget study sessions, four long budget study sessions, and been engaged, and provided really good feedback and input. And again, before I start, or we start this presentation, I want to extend my thanks to the budget team, the finance department, as well as the department heads, and the budget liaisons in each respective department that have been working on this budget probably since December of last year. It's a long, arduous process, and I'm very proud of what they've been able to achieve. With that, we're gonna delve into it. The first slide is going to be council requests that have come up during those four budget study sessions. We have counted for 11 of these requests, and they're listed on this slide in the order of tentative timeline. I have to underscore tentative, that these are subject to change, but we've attempted to put some timelines, reasonable timelines, that we can bring these items back to council for consideration. Starting with Commission on Status of Women, this item will be listed on the New Business Agenda Business Item on June 25th, per the mayor's request. Second one is First-Time Home Buyers Program. This is listed tonight on the New Business Agenda Item, again, per the mayor's request. Number three is Public Benefits Budget, the two-year budget. We will provide a memo sometime this month, and if council's desire to have a presentation on it, we'll be happy to bring that back. Boards and Commission Stipends, I believe was asked by Councilmember Kasakian. This has been brought back, brought up before, and we will bring it back as a new business agenda item for consideration and direction from council. Councilmember Staffing, we will bring a report with options and seeking direction in July of this year. Additional Staffing Incentive Program for Code Compliance. This will be part of a wholesale restructuring and staffing plan that Mr. Calvert has, or is working for the Community Development Department. The plan is to bring that plan to council for consideration in August. Validation Process for Pension Obligation Bonds, we'll bring a report in October. The Comprehensive Communication Plan and Community Outreach on, in The Comprehensive Communication Plan and Community Outreach in November. Prosecution Division or Unit Within the City Attorney's Office in December. Long-term Budget Forecast that Councilmember Brotman has asked for in December. And last but not least, Infrastructure Bond. This is contingent upon completion of a Fire Department Master Plan and the timing is TBD to be determined.
Well, before you go on, I had made a comment to our city manager and I did send a note to all of my colleagues. I would like to hear, have the hearing today and I understand that I couldn't pull this item, but given that Councilmember Kasakian is traveling on a delegation trip and is not able to be present here today, I'm asking my colleagues if we can have the hearing today but actually vote on this item and we don't need to go through the whole presentation again on June 25th when everyone is present. And I do recognize that Councilmember Kasakian had sent an email noting that he's okay with us proceeding without him, but I do feel like this is our city's budget and we should all be voting on this together and be making our comments together. And so if there is support for that from my colleagues, I would appreciate if we can hold a vote for this item until June 25th.
Question.
Sure.
Does that present any challenge to staff?
The challenge, Councilmember Brotman, the challenge is going to be, as you know, we need to have this in place by July 1st of 2024. So that only leaves us five days. In case council wants to make any changes to the budget, really leaves us very little time. I don't know if Mr. Bradford has any, anything else to add.
No, that's, that's essentially the, you summed it up.
We would just need to approve it by July 1st, correct?
That is correct by, by charter.
But that would be the last meeting, so if there were any hiccup at that last meeting, it would be a problem.
I mean, we want, I think Mr. Kasakian said he's good with the budget. I'm not sure if we're concerned that he might later come back and say that he wasn't in favor of the budget and he wouldn't have voted for this or he wouldn't have voted for that. I don't think that's the case, but I'd rather, I mean, let's just do it. I think it's teed up, let's take a whack at it.
Mr. Harpetian?
Yes, I think, look, I'm, I'm okay either way, but I think Mr. Councilmember Kasakian sent an email and I would like to, for all of us to be clear as to what he, he meant by that email, so he won't come back later and say, "Well, that's not what I meant and I wanted to." Maybe the, the city manager, if he has that note, maybe he can go over it quickly and see what was his intention of that email.
He said that barring a 2-2 vote, unless, Mr. Galanian, are you going to read the email?
I just found it, if you'd like me to read it, I'll be happy to.
Sure.
So this is from Councilmember Kasakian. "As some of you already know, I will be traveling from June 3rd to 12th and will not be able to participate in any of the meetings on June 4th or 11th. I have no issues with the budget adoption moving forward without my participation. I have shared my points with staff and barring a 2-2 vote on the adoption that would otherwise necessitate my participation. I'm okay with it being agendized and heard without my public or virtual participation in the vote."
Doesn't exactly say which way he's, he's going to go, just if it's 2-2, he'll, he'll come back. I see your point. We don't want to be.
Yeah.
We don't want to be.
I, well.
In a football term, get from the back on this.
For no other reason than that this is the city's budget and at the very least, I, I think that everybody should be on record in, in support, against, or whatever it may be.
Okay, well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So do we need to take a vote on, on this item?
On continuing it?
Or no?
No, I want to, I want to have the hearing, let's have the hearing and then we can take the vote.
F has a presentation.
Okay.
So after that, you can make your comments, ask questions and anything else that you'd like to deliberate on.
And then you just can continue it, right?
We can just continue it.
Without closing the hearing? Or do you close the hearing?
We don't need to have another hearing is what I was told.
Right.
Correct, so you can just close the hearing and then have the item pushed to, to June 25th if that's your desire.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bradford.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Satrian, members of the council. It's my pleasure to present the 2425 proposed budget and citywide user fees. As noted in our prior study sessions, our proposed 2425 budget stands a little over 1.2 billion and is a $31.5 million increase or 2.7% over last year's budget. General Fund has a proposed budget of 325.7 million, increase of 11.2 million or 3.2%. 3.6%. All told, the General Fund is balanced and we are projecting a surplus of about $600,000. A reserve of 38% or about 123.9 million. Current policy is an minimum of 25% and a target of 35. Special Revenue Funds has a proposed budget of 152.2 million. Budget in these funds depends on funding received from various granting agencies and special tax majors. That said, the increase this year is attributable to the grant we received for the parking deck electrification infrastructure for the B-line facility. This is actually multi-funded through several grants and one of them happens to be in the Special Revenue Funds. Our Debt Service Fund is where we pay the loan on the police building. It will be paid off in year 2030. The non-enterprise capital projects, this is where our General Fund, CIP, is along with our development impact fees, gas tax, and grants for CIP projects. The big increase of 11.9 million is due to the aforementioned parking deck electrification infrastructure for the B-line facility. This is where the balance of the funding for the grants is. Should also note that this budget in this, the non-enterprise capital projects does include an additional $2 million in funding for land acquisition for a new park from the Parks Development Impact Fund, giving us a total of $6 million set aside. For the enterprise funds, this is comprised of, mainly comprised of GWP operations. It's about 84% of the budget, but also holds the Sewer Refuse and Fire Communications Fund. In total, the cumulative change is fairly minor, about 600,000. And lastly, all of our internal service funds, which houses all of our fleet operations, billing maintenance, IT costs, employee fringe benefits, and our liability and, and our comp insurance. Between all the funds, there's a net increase of about 900,000. So with that, now that I've presented the proposed budget for 2425, the next slide is a follow-up regarding some trending of our budget over the last several years. This table shows our adopted budget for fiscal year 2021, which was 906.8 million versus our proposed budget of 1.2 billion, an increase of 297.5 million. For perspective, the annualized change in the General Fund has had an average increase of 6.8%. Special Revenue Funds, 7.3% average annual increase and so on. Citywide, we've had an annualized increase of 7.4% per year. Now I'll go into a little further detail on these increases. So this slide breaks out the 297.5 million dollar increase by our various fund types, but it breaks it out by salary and benefits, M&amp;O costs, capital projects and outlay, and transfers of the 297.5 million. The salary and benefit increases across all funds is about 25% or 73.5 million. The rest of the increase is primarily in M&amp;O costs and capital, meaning we're either providing services or building or buying something. Going back to the General Fund, in the General Fund, the increase is of about 42 million in salary and benefits. A little more than a third of that is salaries in themselves. About 30% or about 12.4 million of that is pensions. 25% or about 10.8 million is the benefits and the rest is overtime and hourly wages. And then the M&amp;O increases are due to increased costs in IT, liability insurance, fleet, and building maintenance. For the Special Revenue Fund, the M&amp;O increases of 26.3 million is funded either generally through grants or voter-approved special tax measures and as we get more of these special revenues, the budget will increase accordingly. Some of the increases include additional funding for housing assistance, the transit operation, the parking fund, urban art fund, and all this attributable is to more grant dollars and tax revenues being received. For the capital projects, the increase in 11 million dollars for the 2425 and of course, we have the aforementioned grant for the parking deck electrification infrastructure in this category. For the enterprise funds, these are all generally funded through user fees or charges for services. The increases are mainly driven by GWP operations and projects. As I mentioned, they're about 84% of the enterprise fund budget. The increases you see for M&amp;O and capital is mainly due to the cost of their providing services and construction have gone up. For example, in GWP Electric, the budget for purchased gas has more than doubled since fiscal year 2021. Power purchases have gone up. We also have more bond interest as we recently issued bond for the Grayson Repowering. There have been similar increases in the Water Operation Fund. And finally, for the internal service costs, again, these increases are for fleet, building maintenance, IT costs, insurances, and employee benefits. These budget increases are generally supported by one of the following taxes in the General Fund, grants and special tax measures in our Special Revenue Funds and of course, our user fees for enterprise funds in the General Fund. So as we get more funding, our budgets typically go up, go up and in fact, depending on the revenue source, we'd be required to spend it particularly for grants and special taxes. So these increases are funded with these various resources and we're not necessarily spending reserves. And to that point, our General Fund reserve was 36% in fiscal year 2021 and is now projected at 38%. Our citywide net position in fiscal year 2021, which is all city assets minus all city liabilities, was 1.6 billion. Last financial statements, it stands at 1.8 billion. And of course, if these resources, taxes, grants, user fees decreased, we'd either have to find new revenue, temporarily backfill with one-time use of reserves or eventually reduce the budget. So hopefully this provides a little more context into the budget increases and how it's ultimately funded. I will pause to see if there's any questions.
So I have a couple of questions, procedural questions. Mr. Galanian, if you can go back to that first slide for the follow-up items. So I think there's two items on the revenue side that are missing from this. EV chargers were one of them that were brought up and then billboards were the other. And I'm trying to understand why is it that the rest of the items are marked as when they would come back, when they were brought up during the budget session, but the Commission on the Status of Women is pending a council direction because when I look at the rest of the items, it has to be one or the other, so can you explain to me why that's different?
Yes, it's Mayor Satrian. The, the other items were related directly to the budget, whereas you had asked for this item to be listed under New Business Item so that you can have a conversation with your colleagues and provide direction to us. That's why we said it's pending direction from council. The rest.
When I, when I made the comment during the, during the budget session, I specified and I opened that comment with, aside from looking at the powers of the Women's Commission, which is going to be coming that night, it was supposed to come that night.
Right.
I said, "I want there to be, for us to look at line item of putting some funding towards programming for women and girls." So that is the same, similar comment that was made for looking at a first-time home buyers program. It was, we've never, none of my council colleagues have had to request and then add for the councilmember staffing and all of that. So provided that the way that I phrase that was independent of looking at the powers of the Women's Commission, why is that requiring a conversation?
Mayor Satrian, I would submit to you and council, depending on the direction that we get from council, that would determine the amount of the budget increase as well as the allocation for each line item that you had mentioned. Whereas, and I would also say, for example, for Boards and Commission Stipend, I also said that that will have to come back. Although it's not listed, should have listed pending council direction, that should also come back for council direction. So Commission on Status of Women is not the only item.
I mean, I'm just going off of what's.
Yeah. We made a mistake, that should also, should have said pending council action. But even with the infrastructure bond, that's going to require council action, right?
Okay. With respect to the incentive programs that were brought forth during the, one of the budget sessions I had talked about us, I guess during the code compliance, that's going to be coming back. Do you need us to give direction on the specific incentive programs today or are you just going to be taking the comments? Because I had noted, for example, the gas leaf blowers, the helping our restaurants, you know, move into the reusables and whatnot. So you're taking comments from that section? Or do you need that again?
Yeah, I would say, Mayor Satrian, let's wait and see what the department will bring forward with options, different options, different amounts, different mechanism and then we'll seek direction from council in August, hopefully.
Okay. So I guess then the only thing that's left is making sure that added to this list is the EV chargers and the billboards for the revenue.
Digital billboards, yes.
Could I follow up on this?
Of course. Oh, Mr. Harpetian, oh, Harpetian has.
Oh, oh, I clicked the wrong thing.
I'm, I'm learning this system really quickly.
Look at that.
Couple of quick questions. What is the, the GWP's budget? I know it's like large portion of our entire, is it like 500 million, 400 million? Because when it says it's enterprise, enterprise funds, it's somehow more combined together, so.
Just one moment, I have that information.
Good evening, Mayor Satrian, council members. The total GWP budget for fiscal year 2425 is 467 million.
467?
Correct.
So that's almost 35% of our total of 1.2, right? Something in that range, I'm trying to. So we better, we really better take care of our, our GWP entity or enterprise, the fund that we have because this one has one of the largest revenues that we have in the city. So anything we need to do to get it back up and running as soon as possible, it has to be done. What is the, how much is the gas tax amount that we have? I, I believe it was like 6 million, 7 million, something in that range, if I'm not mistaken, or many years ago, probably it's a lot more since they increased our taxes.
So for revenue purposes or appropriation, that's going towards using gas tax funds?
Not appropriation, how much gas tax, what is our share of gas tax that we pay?
How much do we collect?
How much do we collect?
Prop, ANC, is that what?
Yeah, so, so for fiscal year 2425, we have about 10, 11, almost 11 million appropriated for revenues.
11 million?
Gas tax funds, yeah.
And that's what we use to pave our roads and do some of our road infrastructures?
Councilmember Harpetian, part of it, yes, but we also use other funding sources.
No, I understand that, of course, 11 million will not pay for all of it, but that gas tax is specifically collected from people who drive their cars and pump gas in their cars and then whatever taxes that they. taxes that they take from us, fifty percent, I believe the number was fifty percent will come back to the city for. So this city is generating twenty-two million, twenty-five million dollars in gas tax, that portion of it comes back, and we use that, 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 those funds to maintain or, or rebuild some of our roads. Just want everyone to take a note of that because it's important to, and EV chargers don't, EV cars don't pay anything, right, in, in, in that gas tax, something, because they don't use any gases.
They do, they do.
They don't.
No, I think they do.
I know they don't. There's a talk to bring it in, to, to charge them a little bit, but there is no.
Oh, okay, maybe it's pending.
Right, it is pending. And my last question is, and they use the same roads and they have the same wear and tear and tire wear and tear and brake wear and tear, but so far, only the gas combustion engine cars are paying hefty amount of money to, to pave our roads. So the last question is, the grants that we receive every year, that's part of our, we show it as an income, right, as a revenue, right?
That is correct.
That's why our revenue goes up and down, because the rest is pretty, I don't want to say even, but like property tax, sales tax, every, every other revenue that we have, like GWP, they're pretty much, they're even every year, but the grants go up and down, that's why it's, it's shown as an income.
That is, that is correct.
Yep.
Okay.
That's all I have right now, thank you.
Councilmember Bratman?
Thank you. Can you go back to that slide that had the list of upcoming items? Yeah, so just to, just to go back to the code compliance and the incentive program. So you said staff will be bringing something back. I just want to make sure that will include something around the leaf blowers and around transitioning to plastics or, or non-plastic reusables, right?
All of the above.
It's just the, the specific details of those, we won't know until staff has time to work on it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure those were included. And then I brought up a point about CERT having a specific line item or whatever, you know, a certain amount earmarked to make sure that it doesn't get cannibalized by other priorities. Is that something we have?
Chief Fish has assured me and has assured council that we don't need to allocate a specific line item for CERT program, that he, he will make sure that in next year's, his next year's budget includes implementing a new CERT program for that year.
Okay.
So you can hold him to it.
Okay, we have that on, on tape. Okay. We're going to get that in an email?
I think we can trust his word.
Yeah, yeah. What was your word, not his, I heard you, so I want to hear it from him, but anyway. And then, let me just look. Okay, so the infrastructure bond, I see you say pending completion of the fire master plan. I would just like to, you know, put on the table that as I've been thinking about an infrastructure bond, I think it should include more than the fire stations. We have issues with our road condition index and keeping that either where it is or improving it. Ideally, we can improve it a little bit. So I'd like to see if we're looking at infrastructure bond, we're considering our road repaving. And two other things that have come to, you know, that I've been thinking about, one is our recycled water system with, you know, I mean, right now, it's been pretty good with the rains the last couple of years, but, you know, we have to expect that drought is going to be a long-term feature, and my understanding is that, and I see our, our water, our water boss back there, is that we, we have a lot of, we have a large allocation of recycled water that we just can't deliver to where we might want to deliver it. So I would like us to be thinking about having the funds to expand that wherever, you know, the best opportunities are. I always go back to Verdugo Park and Glendale College, because one's right across the street from the other, and I know we have recycled water into Glendale College, but we're using potable water in Verdugo Park. And it seems like, God, shouldn't it be, it shouldn't be that difficult to connect the purple pipe into Verdugo Park. So I hope we can include that in the infrastructure bond. And the last thing is, we're going to have a climate action and adaptation plan coming to us. I think there are going to be significant climate adaptation costs that we're going to hear about, things that we're going to have to do to harden our infrastructure, whether it is water, or it's GWP, or it's, you know, any number of things. So I hope that infrastructure bond is, is, is broader, and, and I think you, you think it is, and I just wanted to make that point.
And I, I want to emphasize, Councilmember Bratman, that in order to be able to apply to, for issuance of any types of bonds, we need to have plans in place, hence the master plan. We know that a fire department is working on a master plan for replacement and reconstruction of our fire stations, so that's something that we can use. I do believe, and I've been told, that our GWP water division also is working on a master plan. So with those in hand, we should be able to parse out at least, maybe not for the same bond issuance like we did with GWP's in two or three different tranches, but we need to have those master plans in place first.
Okay, so just teeing up to make sure we have these other master plans in place as well. And just the last thing I would note, since Councilmember Harpetian mentioned GWP and its, and its revenue potential, the best way to increase the revenue out of GWP is to get everybody to drive an electric car and charge it in Glendale, so that we take all the business from Chevron away, and it goes to these guys right here. And the other thing is, if we have building electrification, all that money that's going to SoCal Gas can go right to GWP. That way, GWP picks up a lot more revenue, and there's a lot more to go around for the city of Glendale and for our residents, because GWP is us, right?
We need those five ortillas then, I think, Mr. Bratman.
No, I don't think so. I think we can do it.
Mr. Harpetian, you had an additional question just now?
No, I had a couple. As far as the fire department master plan, while we're looking at the ways of financing it, I think we talked about it as far as some development impact fees for very large developments that come into the city. I think they need to pay their share. If you're building twelve-hundred units, fifteen-hundred units in Glendale, you have, they have to pay their share of our, our resources that is going to be used as far as police and fire and parks and everything else, because I know we have parks, parks fees, but the rest, before we approve any of these projects and they move forward, I think we need to look into it. If you want, if you're willing to, if you, if you really do want to finance the fire departments and police departments and all the master plan that we had. The other one is, it doesn't have to be this week or for the twenty-fifth, but what I would like to know is, how much investments are we making on projects that we get grants for, and then we have to match basically that grant? Sometimes we have to match one-to-one, sometimes it's like fifty percent. I think it's a real big number, and I know that we had an incentive program for reducing demand fees, demand, GWP, not GWP. What do they call it? Help me out here. The demand rate when, when we have.
Response program?
Not demand response program. It's a, it's a program that you have to reduce as the demand that we have for electricity on high days, on high, high demand days.
Yeah, demand response.
Demand response, okay. I knew that, I was just testing you to see if you. So the, the demand response program, I know we spent three million, three and a half million dollars, and the, the result was maybe two megawatt or two and a half or one and a half megawatt, which is not very good. So if we're having programs like that, it has to be effective. So that will, all of these will affect our, our budget in general. So I want to know, how much are we matching the grants and what the total is for like last year or last two years, and also the programs that we have to make it more efficient so we don't just spend all that money and the results are very low? And as far as.
If I, if I may, Councilmember Harpetian, are you asking for all the grants that each department receives or only GWP? Because this could be a large, large number, especially if we're going back three years.
Not three years, maybe, let's, let's, I don't want to, I don't want to make an unnecessary work for, for staff. We are overloaded already. So maybe one year, not all the projects. You don't have to do the small projects, the larger ones that we had to invest in it as well. So we'll see what the results of our investments were. That's all. Again, I don't want to create an unnecessary work for staff, but I think these are important to know. So if they're not effective, we don't have to do it next year or the following year. And as far as the GWP, Mr. Bratman, I think we, we can, we can, we can iron it out some other time. We don't, it's not, today is not the time. I think we all have our passion for what's going on in the city, and I don't think anybody's wrong, but we'll, 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 we'll talk about it, it's not a problem. But I agree with you, we need to take care of GWP and Mr. Majara, and you also still have time to add another five ortillas in, in that plan, so.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam.
I'll just say that I've never seen the GWP staff smile ear to ear the way that they've been smiling for less than fifteen minutes. So, all right, where are we at?
Back to the presentation.
Okay.
I just have one more slide. I will briefly cover the proposed amendments to our citywide fee schedule. As you know, we had a comprehensive fee study. We took a deep dive on our various processes and recalculated our costs to ensure compliance with propositions twenty-six and two-eighteen to ensure we aren't charging more than the cost of providing the service. Over thirteen-hundred fees were studied across multiple departments, including community development, parks, Glendale Water and Power, Public Works, Library Arts and Culture. Based on our new cost rollups and staff time estimates, if we charge the full cost, we'd be looking at increases of citywide revenue of about nine-point-three million, of which seven-point-six million is in the general fund. However, we're going to continue subsidizing fees that we think is appropriate, with the majority being in parks and rec. And based on departmental recommendations, we believe the revenue would be closer to about five-point-four million, of which four million is in the general fund. And with that, that does conclude my presentation.
Mr. Bratman, I wanted to underscore the fact that we are recommending a, in the total amount of three-point-nine million dollars in subsidies.
Right, so I actually have some just overall budget comments, just to see where we land. For economic development, I had asked for a detailed spreadsheet on the expenses. I was going to ask for an additional hundred thousand to be allocated to proactive outreach for the economic development team. When I looked at the detailed spreadsheet, and when we're going over it with staff, they were spending between fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand on an annual basis on even like social media, that, that's how much their budget was for like social media outreach and proactive outreach. And that's just a drop in the bucket when we, we are actually talking about proper outreach, that's not really going to get us far. I recognize that there's some funding that is parked in economic development that has not been utilized. I want to make sure that at least a hundred thousand of that is actually being allocated this coming year to proactive outreach in getting businesses to our city, and then spotlighting, highlighting both our small businesses as well as the programming that we have coming out of economic development. I'd like to see that specifically earmarked in the budget. And then the, so based off of what you've presented, you know, our internal policy is twenty-five to twenty, twenty-five to thirty-five percent reserve, based on what you're presenting is thirty-eight-point-nine percent reserve, which is.
I think it's thirty-eight percent, if I'm not mistaken.
Thirty-eight, okay, I thought it was thirty-eight-point-nine, okay. Which is above our own.
Target.
Target, maximum target, which leaves, though the number is what, nine percent, even, if we do the budget adjustment, it's supposed to be seven, so seven million, we have beyond our thirty-five percent reserve. So any of these things that are coming back, we have an opportunity to allocate funding to. I said this during the, one of these sessions, but I would like to put some money away for a park in South Glendale. I don't know what that fund looks like, and I know that we said we can move it at any time, but again, I don't want it to come to a point where we turn around and say, well, we don't really have the money for it if the opportunity is there. So I'm looking for guidance from staff on that.
If I may.
Yes.
Before you move on to your next item, Mayor Satrian, we currently have six million dollars sitting in that bucket, if you will, and Mr. Bolenikian is working on getting appraisals for two or three sites that we'll bring to close session for your consideration. And, and you are correct, that seven or so million dollars, as a reminder, it's a one-time monies, right? You, you can't pay it for over a few years, so that would be a good opportunity. Once we bring those items to, for your consideration, then you can tap into that additional funding that's in the, about a budget, the fund balance.
Okay. The last comment I have is on the fees themselves. I would really like to see a more thorough dive and explanation when it comes to the fees. We are living in times when people are struggling. I know we raised the electricity rates. I would like to get a better understanding from our economic development department, our planning department, specifically as it pertains to the fees that are going to be increased for small businesses, for building and permits, because I know construction costs have gone up, as well as GWP fees that are associated with permits that we're getting. Those are really the three main area, or four more main areas that I personally would like to see additional information on before we move forward with approving the fees of where we can help subsidize and just kind of get a better understanding of it. So I know there's a lot of fees in there. So it's really difficult.
Right.
As just an individual to, to go through them and figure out what's what and how that's going to impact, and so.
Mayor Satrian, again, I, I would recommend that if council moves forward with adopting the budget tonight to include the fee study, and at any, any time that you desire, we can bring a report back from GWP and CDD to go over those fees. Yeah, you are correct, we have over thirteen-hundred fees, but you can delve down and get into the details of those fees, and if we need to adjust them lower, if council direction is to, to add more subsidies in addition to that three-point-nine million, then we can always adjust the budget later on.
Well, we did already agree that we're not going to adopt the budget today, and it's going to be moved to the twenty-fifth, so, but I would like to do it at the same time if it's possible. Is that enough time for staff to just give us some additional information?
I, I think we need to revisit the, the delay in adopting the budget. I, I don't think I.
I was under the impression.
So you want to put it to the twenty-fifth, but what if I'm not here on the twenty-fifth?
I thought everyone's here on the twenty-fifth.
Things happen. I may have some medical procedures done. What happens then? I think we should just do it now. But if I'm not here on the twenty-fifth, I want you to know that I fully support the budget. I do not, I, I make no comment on these council requests. I mean, I'm, you, you've got to convince me. I'm, I'm at a no, you've got to convince me to go yes on all of those, except for the budget forecast. I think that's, that's legitimate, but just so, you know, I'm not playing games with you. I'm full in on the budget, I approve the budget. If I were to be called on today or on the twenty-fifth, I would be supporting the budget. But if I'm not here, just go on without me, though, I want you to know that.
Well, the whole point was to have everybody be present, Councilmember Majara.
Well, I mean, things, yeah. What's wrong? Well, next week, you're out, and then there's no meeting the next week.
The point was, okay, I, I requested it for it to, for it to be moved to the twenty-fifth. I thought I had gotten the support, it seems like it's moving in a different direction, so.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I might not be here the twenty-fifth, but you guys knew it.
I'm not, I'm not ready to vote on a budget today.
I would rather just go, go ahead.
I will not be voting on the budget today. I will not be voting on the budget today.
You would rather go ahead and do it tonight?
I will be...
I'd rather just go ahead and do it. I think Councilmember Kasakian was clear. He, if he had any issues with the budget, he would bring it up, so, and he doesn't play that kind of game, so...
Yes.
So I want to just understand, Madam Mayor, your request is to bring the fee studies back and give us a report on the increases and why the increases were there, or what is the...
Just a better understanding of the fees for each of those four sections.
Right.
That's all.
Is that something that we can do in the future as well? I mean, near future? Because it's not going to make a difference on the budget in general, right? Because even, let's say, there are four departments that you want the fees to come back for review?
Those are the four that I'm interested in hearing additional details on. I'm happy to, the fees for me are separate from the budget, so...
If we approve the budget tonight and we hear the fees in the next month or so, a couple of weeks, or three weeks, or four weeks, would that be an issue?
No doubt.
Would that be okay?
I would be totally fine with that, but again, I'm not voting on the budget tonight. I will not be participating in the vote on the budget tonight. I would like for us to do that on the 25th. For the reason that I already stated, which is I would like for all of us to be present. And if I want to be open about it, I had, the initial date for the budget session was on June 11th. I was made aware that Councilmember Kasakian will not be at the June 11th meeting. In order to accommodate that, I moved it to June 4th. And then I was made aware through our city manager, Galanian, that he will not be present on the 4th. And so I am asking for us to move this item to the 25th when everyone is present, unless there is an emergency. I understand that life happens and emergencies take place, but...
When is our next meeting? Next week?
We have a meeting on the 11th, yes.
And then we are dark the following week.
We're dark on the 18th and the next meeting after that will be the 25th. It's the last meeting in June.
And what happens if Councilmember Kasakian extends his vacation? He's having a great time, he doesn't want to come back?
He's coming back on the 12th.
He's coming back on the 12th?
Correct.
I mean, what if any one of us can't?
An emergency is very different than someone noting that they've been, they're going to be out.
But he said the 11th first and then, so you put it till today and then he said he's not here today.
Yeah, I believe Councilmember Najarian, he changed the plans and he left earlier than planned.
I mean...
I've already said what I need to say, so...
There's something going on here.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know exactly what it is.
If I might, I don't think it makes sense for us to vote if the mayor is not going to vote on it. So we'll push it, in my opinion, we should push it to the 25th. I don't like putting things at the last minute in case there's a hiccup, but if that's the way it's going to be, then, you know...
That was not the plan.
Well, I...
I not only moved it to the 4th, I changed my trip dates to accommodate.
Look, I'm okay to go to the 20, 25th, is it? Next? When?
When we have full council.
When we have full council, but my vote is to, you know, would be to approve the budget. I want to make it very clear today, even if there's a hiccup, we have to move forward with our budget at that time. We don't have time to go back and forth. It's at the last minute. We're putting ourselves in that position, so it will be a last-minute decision. If there's an issue, my vote will be to approve the budget and then address whatever issue that comes up in the near future, so. But I'm okay with it to go to the 25th.
Councilmember Arpetian, I have made all the comments and questions I had with respect to the budget. I have no plans of changing that.
No, no, no. I'm not saying you have a plan.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just saying...
And if I might, I'll, for the record, say the same thing that my colleagues are saying. I'm a yes on the budget and if for some reason that I don't expect, but if I'm not here, I'm a yes on the budget.
Yeah, but as a courtesy to...
Yeah, well...
To Councilmember Kasakian and the mayor, I'm willing to go to the 25th, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
Well, I don't think it's a courtesy to Mr. Kasakian. It implies that we don't trust him.
That's not...
I think it does, but that's okay, that's okay, whatever.
Please don't put words in my mouth, Councilmember Najarian.
I'm not putting it in your mouth. I'm putting it what I think appears to be a sense.
That's not my opinion. I just want everyone to be present to vote on the budget. It's as simple as that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move forward.
What's going on here? I don't know what's going on.
Please don't make any assumptions that have not been communicated. Thank you.
I'll state my thoughts at any moment as a member of the council.
Very well. Is that it?
So we close the hearing?
We will close the hearing. Thank you to staff.
Next item.
Next item is discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. Item A, Councilmember Arpetian's request to consider the removal and replacement of Burbank Glendale Pasadena Airport Commissioner Quintero moved from 5/21/2024 council meeting.
If I may?
Yes.
Well, hallelujah. I think I made this motion, what is it, over a month ago? And it didn't get on the agenda, then Councilmember Kasakian didn't feel well and we postponed it again, then we had a dark, dark week, and this week, you know, I hope we can just vote for it and move forward. And when it comes back, we'll discuss the item. I'm interested in airport commission, I was on it before and I believe I've done a good job. It was a great experience for me, so I'm interested in it. So if we, do we have to make a motion to have...
Yes, it requires a motion, a second and a vote to...
So I'll make the motion.
I would like to make a comment. I think Mr. Quintero plays a vital role and should remain until the end of his term, which I believe is next...
Next, May 31st.
Oh, May 31st. Should the council decide to remove him, I want it to be clear that I've expressed an interest in the position of airport authority back at the time we appointed Mr. Quintero, actually. I said I was interested in it. I thought Frank, I keep saying Frank, I thought Mr. Quintero was a better candidate than myself because of his experience and because of some of the things that were going on at the time, so I just want that to be clear that I do have an interest and if it comes up, I will, I will be seeking the position as well. But I think we should just leave Frank on and take a look at this at the end of May next year.
Well, I totally disagree with that. Same thing happened a few years back.
This, this, this item is not up for discussion. It's just to...
We need three votes. I'll make the motion for eight.
We need a second.
Is there a second?
Well, may I ask one question, which isn't about the merits of it, but do we have any policy that you would be bringing forth, any existing policy regarding appointments that you would bring forth if we put it on the agenda?
With respect to, no, we have a, we are bringing a policy discussion on the nomination of boards and commissions, the city boards and commissions, but not generally with respect to this one.
There's no seniority thing?
No. No.
So I think we should discuss it probably. It looks like we've got a discussion. I would like, I mean, Frank has been doing a good job. He does have a term that ends in about a year, but in deference to my colleague who wants to discuss, colleagues, I guess, now who want to discuss it, I wouldn't be opposed to having a discussion.
Great, so are you seconding the motion?
Yes, was, if there was a motion, uh...
Yeah, Vartan.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Bratman?
No.
Harpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Satrian?
Yes. Next item.
Next item is, item B.
We'll come to a future agenda.
It's three.
So it was three, it was Vartan?
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
Next item is item B, Councilmember Najarian's request for retention of an independent law firm to prepare a legal opinion regarding the validity of the mayoral selection decision of April 2nd, 2024, including the reasons provided thereof, moved from May 21st, 2024 council meeting.
Well, this was mine, and I'm not quite certain that the independent attorney part of it is necessary, but I would like to have, you know, as background, we had the mayor selection on April 2nd and Mr. Bratman gave some reasons why he didn't think I was in the best interests of the city. And during some of those, some, not every one of his points, but one of his points related to the interpretation that I had on a state law, Education Code 211.5, regarding disclosure of gender identity to parents. I believe he was wrong in that, factually wrong. Probably Mr. Bratman has a different opinion on that. Because it was used as a reason to, perhaps a finding, to use to find me not in the best interests of the city, and there is a dispute on the actual legal interpretation of the state of the law, I would like to have an opinion. I would naturally, if it were in any other circumstance, it would be a city attorney doing it. There may be a conflict, there may be a conflict. Of course, that's, maybe that's something we could discuss if it comes forward, but I think we're entitled to know when I'm called a liar about a particular part of the law and that's used to deny me the mayorship, that we should have a legal opinion as to whether that's correct or who is correct, myself or Mr. Bratman. And it's germane to the city. It was used for a very important decision and it's not just my word you should listen to, it's not Mr. Bratman's word you should listen to. I think we should have, it should come before us and we, at that point, would be deciding whether to ask for the opinion, this is what we're doing, putting it on the agenda, deciding whether we should be asking for an opinion on that issue. If you follow me.
Do I always have questions or comments?
I do have a question, I don't know, commentary question. This is, I'm new to this and I'm glad that I'm new to this issue. Mr. Councilmember Najarian, can you cite that law that is in dispute right now? You said there's a, there was an opinion, there was a dispute. If that law is in dispute, what would the, the opinion of city attorney or independent council, if you will, will make it, what difference would that make?
Well, ultimately, the difference would make if the premise of the basis for, if one of the premises of the basis of me being denied mayorship under, not in the best interests of the city, is false, then that argument and basis for denying me is invalid.
But if that, those bases are being challenged in court at this time and there's no decision yet, the opinion can be, can be...
That's another issue. I mean, let's not talk about what happens in court. This is something that happened here. It's a question of law and it is in the city attorney's duties under the charter to advise the officers of the city. He shall give his advice or opinion in writing whenever required by the council or other officers. And that's in the charter, that's Article 8, City Attorney, Section 2, duties. This is what our attorney does, is he gives us an opinion on some.
So I think we're discussing it and...
So, yeah, you should not be discussing this, so...
Today is only to take, have a vote to put it on the, on the agenda?
Right.
For discussion?
For discussion.
Okay.
If I might, I think we're wasting time and I said this in detail last time this came up, but this point about not informing the parents was really a very secondary thing. I never said you were a liar about it because it wasn't a lie what you said. What you said is they don't even have to inform the parents, which is correct. Okay? All I said was that there was context to that and the context is that state law requires that certain information be held confidential and not shared with parents. You're challenging that? It's, there's one case that's gone before, one judge who kind of has a reputation for taking unusual positions on things beneath us in San Diego, but there are two other cases. It's an unsettled matter of law right now and it actually doesn't even matter. Like even if we were to say, "I was completely wrong, the school district fought this and maybe the school district was wrong," it doesn't really matter because that's not what I was focused on. I was focused, focused on the misinformation that you repeated, which had to do with other things. So anything that we decide here, anything that the city attorney tells us about these three or four cases that are going on around the state, really isn't relevant to the decision that was made when we made the mayor's election. So I just think we're wasting our time to agendize this and wasting the city attorney's time to write an opinion about it. So I'm not going to support it.
Well, the city attorney should have been making a comment when you made a statement of law. So I'd like an opinion. I think it's important that we discuss this. I know that you all, everyone here voted against me to be mayor. I think that you have to keep an open mind for full transparency. I'm going to go through this step by step. I am not going to stop. If this doesn't go forward under council comments, I'll present my own case, week after week. So you'll want to respond to me, I'm sure. What better way than to agendize this and to have it in such a matter? Something called the First Amendment, that you can't hold something against someone, deny him a liberty or property right, based on things that he says. That's a First Amendment argument as well.
So we're going to agendize this to discuss if we need a second opinion or an outside council opinion or city attorney's opinion?
That's what I think we should do.
And who decides that at that time, city attorney? Let's say we decide, we agendize it and do we have to take a vote at that time again and say?
Correct.
You need three votes to say, "Okay, go ahead and hire an outside consultant and it's just a discussion at this time."
Right, whether to agendize that. And just so there's no surprises, whether you agenda, if you do agendize it, our view will be, one, it does require council action to seek an independent opinion. I don't think any individual council member can demand a legal opinion of me or my office or outside council. It does require council approval, which is, you know, why we're here. And then just the other thing, because it is seemingly germane to an issue that could be, could arise in potential litigation, our advice would be not to, not to authorize such an opinion. You know, Councilmember Najarian's going to be free to retain his own council if he wishes to advise him on that issue. I don't think that the city's purse should be used to provide that opinion, but I'll provide that, if you agendize it, I'll provide that opinion again when it comes back.
So, Councilmember Najarian, you want to make a motion and...
I'll move that we bring this forward.
Actually, we have one public speaker. We have Romela Irari.
Excuse me, I was too. I'm a public speaker also.
You, you had written oral communication.
No, it's fine. You go ahead, but before you guys leave, I'm talking.
This is, this is, ma'am, did you want to speak on this item or on, during oral communication?
I don't know, whatever you want to put it. I'm going to say what I like to say.
Is it on this agenda item? If we can find out, no, okay. Okay, then, all right.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Actually, I hate to talk to the empty chamber. I mean, yeah, but... Yeah, but it's important.
Ma'am, you can't speak out of turn. Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, actually, yeah, and April 2nd, this council, they discussed an agenda on mayor selection and they're supposed to come back next week, a next session, council meeting session, to talk about mayoral, mayors, it's going to act as a best interest of the city. And next session, we came here and I don't know what happened to that agenda and we had this fiasco of mayor, mayor, mayor selection. It was like a fiasco. I mean, it was a theater, something like that. And, yeah, it's not that clear what happened that day. And there were rules that... And there were rules that were violated or something. Actually, I'm on that page with Mr. Najarian, that we need to discuss, to go back to that day and see what happened. I mean, as a public, I'm not clear that, that how, that how the mayor was elected that day. So, of course, it doesn't mean that I'm a fan of Mr. Najarian being the mayor, but still, yeah, it is a crucial point that we have to address that, we have to come back. And I'm not quite sure this agendizes, needs to be agendized this, this matter, I'm not sure, but still, yeah, we definitely need to go back and address that. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Najarian?
All right, I'm going to move agendizing this item.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Go call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
No.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatian?
No. So, I guess this is coming back?
Yeah, it'll come back next week, or, sorry, well, we'll put it on the agenda for next week, it has to carry over from meeting to meeting, but at that point, it can either come back, if there's no vote on it, it can come back at that point, on the 25th.
All right, next item?
Next item is Mayor Asatian's request for a report on a first-time homebuyer program.
So I spoke to staff briefly about this. I don't need it to come back initially as a, an item on the agenda. I think staff had shared some concerns, some difficulties, but they are willing to put together a memo. If there is any way for us to create a first-time homebuyers program, I'm interested in that. I also spoke to our Glendale Realtors Association, they had some ideas, so for the time being, I would like just a memo, and based off of the memo, we can decide at that time whether or not to agendize. I'm not seeking to agendize this at this point.
And you had marked the date on the budget when that could potentially come back, correct? Okay.
All right, next item?
Would there be?
New business.
Okay.
I think there's no motion on that.
Okay.
Oral communication?
Oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have one public speaker.
Great.
And that's Roseanne Kalaba.
Welcome.
Sorry, I don't know all the rules of law, whatever, but I do have to say what's on my mind.
Welcome to your city council chambers.
Hi, city council. Mayor and councilpeople, my name is Roseanne Kalaba. I'm a resident in Glendale more than 50 years. The reason I want to talk about today is the new, the bicycle lanes, not bicycle lanes, how you've destroyed Brand Boulevard going from Glen Oaks up to Mountain. There's more congestion on that street, supposed to be great for business, there's no business. There's the parking, there's more accidents because you're parking in only one lane going each way. There's very much congestion. The people can't go into the businesses because the parking is very disrupted. There's offices for dentists and so forth going up, there's little businesses with coffee shops and so forth, people can't go in conveniently, I should say the word conveniently, because of the congestion on the traffic. There is, I went personally to few of the businesses along that way to see what their opinion was. Their opinion is they're losing business because it's not convenient for their customers to come into their stores. Also with your bicycle propositions, I don't know how you expect trade people who have, plumbers have merchandise, they have, they're not going to be riding a bicycle if they're going to do surfaces, they have their equipment in their trucks, it's very congested. They have, we have to have gardeners working, that, people have their tools to work, they can't work with a bicycle. There's a church on that area, there's school in that area, much congestion, more people. Here you have one lane going each way and a bicycle, there's no, there's no bicycles going up and down that way. You made a room for a bicycle? There isn't a person who had a business there told me I haven't seen a bicycle in there in two years. You wasted money to make those rules, to make the road the way it is? It's not good for the people there. The people who have businesses there or live in that area need that road to maneuver. It wasn't, it wasn't planned well, and I suppose I'm, I don't even know about it, I'm a little lady, don't know anything about business or traffic. These people, in a few years, you're going to have to change that road again to get the people working. People who live in there, you can't get access to that road to go back and forth to their houses and their businesses. If you go see what you made, you made a mess. You did. It's not good for the business. The business is going to be closing, and then you're going to have more homeless people coming because you, they can't have money from their businesses to support their families. You have people who can't do their trade because what? They can't, it's congested, it takes forever, if one lane, there's more accidents, it's going, it went from, it didn't improve it at all, it did not. Common sense, I don't know where is common sense in this world anymore, but it sure didn't end up there, and it's not just on brand, you're making all these different areas going to be bicycles and bicycles. How are old people going to do bicycles? We're old, yes. Their accidents have happened because it's too, you made it more congestion, one lane and another, it's practical, go and see what you've done. It's not good, it's not good for anybody in that area. You don't go, who's in that area? Maybe, yeah, you don't go to that area because it's congested, or you don't live in that area, but it's affected people in our city. That area, there's a thing on San Fernando Road, you put a divider there, that's breaking away per traffic too. I don't know, I know you have other areas, foothill and whatever your areas are, that you're going to put bicycles and so forth. It's not going to be good for the people, for the area. We have, we're not, we, bicycles, we, we have to have the trucks to take, the gardeners have their equipment, the plumber is after, you have to have service in the buildings, the plumber, he's his tools, he needs his truck, he can't be taking a bicycle with his tools. I, I mean, common sense, that's all I know, common sense. I don't have rules and traffic things and all that, but go and see what's there and see if you think it's, you did an improvement. You spent money for, I don't know what.
Thank you.
You wasted money.
So I'm actually going to just clarify a couple of things, if I may, and this isn't going to be a discussion because it's oral communication, so, okay? All right, okay. So I actually live in that neighborhood. I live in that neighborhood. I take that street up and down, that's the street I take, okay? I personally see some of the things that do need to be fixed. I want to let you know that this project currently is temporary, we are waiting on community feedback. One of the things that I have noted to anybody that has reached out is for you to actually submit the survey. I think it's really important for all of these comments to come to council with the report, because it'll help us paint, you know, it'll paint a better picture versus, versus, versus folks getting emails and then showing up to council meetings, so. So if I may, no, we can't, we can't have a discussion, so I'm just going to make these comments to you, and then if I can have our city clerk share the link, and with that, I actually want to comment staff, because it's the first time that I've ever seen that the surveys are done in Spanish, Armenian, and English, which I got super excited when I went on the, and I clicked on the link and saw it. So I'm inviting and telling everybody in the community, the good, the bad, whatever it may be, please submit it, so it's part of the report that comes, and then we can make an educated decision, but there are things that I really, really like about what's, you know, what's been done, and there are things that I personally have seen that are, I know that are not going to work, and so I look forward to that discussion when the item comes, and I hope that you'll also participate and spread. No, so we can't have a discussion, I'm happy to, okay, we can't, we can't have this, thank you, I appreciate you coming though, okay? Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. If we can have, if we can share the survey link with her, that'd be great.
You mentioned the survey, I haven't checked this one, but prior surveys are like the one on La Crasena Avenue, that project that we have, and like where you go wash, it's, the way it's formulated, it doesn't ask you if you are for or against this project. First, first question they have to ask is that, and then it's asking you, how do you think we can improve this beautiful landscape project, for example? The way it's formulated, I don't know who takes care of these items, but I have to check the one for Brand Boulevard, but the ones prior to that, or the one for La Crasena Avenue, and it doesn't even tell you that it's taking a traffic lane out, it doesn't tell you that it's taking street parking out, or it doesn't tell you that the streets are, the parkings are going to be narrow. I think the survey has to tell people exactly what the project is going to do, and if they're for it, by all means. But first thing they have to ask, based on their, their experiences, do you like this project or not, do you want this project or not? Then go through the, every other.
So I have actually taken a look at that, and I'll tell you, even for this project, when the survey was being conducted to give us options, I had issues with the way that the survey was being prepared, and then the staff went and fixed it, because the actual images of what it would look like was not even part of the survey, you had to go and look on a different document, and that stuff doesn't work. So I have taken a look at it, I'm happy with the survey, because I, on many occasions, I've commented on different surveys not doing what I think should be doing, so.
I'll take a look at it again, I'll bring my comments next week, thank you.
But I, I do want to, if you can, I know that our public works director's not here, but I was, I was definitely all smiles when I saw the different languages, thank you so much. Anything else?
New business.
All right.
I do have a new business. I move that the city attorney, being hereby is authorized to resolve the lawsuit entitled Rafik Agajani versus City of Glendale et al., Los Angeles Superior Court, Case Number 23STV, STCVO 8121, in exchange for a full release of all claims in the amount of $40,000. This settlement is not an admission of any liability whatsoever for any wrongdoing with respect to plaintiff, by defendant, or by any person or department, but it is the compromise of disputed claims.
Second.
Go call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatian?
Yes.
One more?
We have, we have adjournment, right?
No, 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 he has another new business.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
May I speak, please? I move that with respect to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision in California Restaurant Association versus the City of Berkeley, 89, Fed 4th, 1094, Ninth Circuit, 2024, and correspondence from the California Restaurant Association dated May 10th, 2024, the city council hereby directs staff to suspend enforcement of those portions of Ordinance Number 5999 that require all newly constructed buildings in Glendale to be all-electric, as that term is defined in the ordinance. Specifically, the council directs the building official to cease enforcement of Section 4.1B, subsection 4.106.5, and Section 5.106.13 of the local amendments to the California Energy Code. All other provisions of Ordinance 5999, including but not limited to those pertaining to photovoltaic requirements and EV charging, as well as all requirements in the California Building Code and/or the California Energy Code regarding electric readiness, shall continue to be enforced. Can I get a second?
Second.
Go call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
No.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatian?
Yes. Next time.
Adjournment.
We have two adjournments?
Okay, yes. I would like to adjourn in the memory of Bob McKay. Let's see, here we go, and I'll read a little note about Bob. "We recently lost a legend in the Glendale community. Over Bob McKay's 41 years of employment with the City of Glendale's Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department, thousands of community members, both young and old alike, benefited from the recreation and sports programs provided under his leadership. It was, however, Mr. McKay's personal touch and positive attitude that stood out. His impact and influence on the community's youth and adults will live on in the hearts he touched."
Thank you. Our next adjournment in memoriam is for Raul Porto Senior. Raul, along with his beloved wife Rosa, founded the iconic Porto's Bakery in 1976, a name that has become legendary in our community. Raul's journey began in a modest Echo Park strip mall, but his and Rosa's passion and dedication soon led them to relocate the business to Glendale in 1982, where it flourished and became a staple of our jewel city. Under Raul's leadership, Porto's Bakery expanded beyond Glendale, opening new locations in Burbank, and subsequently in Buena Park, Downey, Northridge, and West Covina. Regardless of his professional success, Raul prioritized his family, choosing to retire several years ago, to focus on raising his grandchildren and great-grandchildren. On May 22nd, Raul passed away peacefully at the age of 92, surrounded by his family. His life was a testament to hard work, family values, and community spirit. His devotion to his family and his community left an indelible mark on all who knew him. As we adjourn today's meeting, let us honor Raul Porto Senior's memory and express our gratitude for his contributions to our community. Together, Raul and Rosa created not just a bakery, but a legacy of love, resilience, and delicious memories that will continue to thrive in their absence."
Thank you both. May they both rest in peace. We are adjourned, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.